All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'll call this June 6th, the Sammamish Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's start out with approval of this evening's agenda. Anybody have any comments about this evening's agenda? Sayad and Hisham will have to yell at me because it's a little hard to see you down there. Okay, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Approval of the minutes. So our last meeting, May 16th. Any comments or corrections to the May 16th meetings, meeting minutes? Nope, okay, we'll call the May 16th meeting minutes approved. Next is non-agenda public comment. So tonight, as a reminder, we have critical areas ordinance update discussion and some discussion on middle housing. So, public comment on anything other than those two things, three minute per person. Who do we have for non-agenda public comment? Go ahead. And I'm going to spin around here.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Roda Baugh. I've lived in the city. Now, I am also a land use, real estate, and environmental law attorney. I live in the Sammamish Highlands neighborhood. That is the neighborhood directly across the street from what will be the site of the new Issaquah School District High School, number four. My neighborhood is a bit of an anomaly. It's in the part of the city where the west side of 228th Avenue southeast is within the city of Issaquah, and the east side of 228th is in the city of Sammamish. At the recent joint meeting with the City Council and the Issaquah School Board, they indicated that the new high school they anticipated would be open in the fall of 2027. We're in the middle of a comprehensive plan update that spans an outlook of 20 years of planning future with periodic updates every 10 years. And at the moment, I consider high school number two to be the second most impactful development that will occur in our community within the next decade. First, there's the town center, and followed by that is high school number four. And unfortunately, the impact of high school number four has not been discussed or considered in this comprehensive plan update process. My neighborhood is still zoned R1. The lots in my neighborhood were developed in the late 1970s when it was rural, unincorporated King County, and they no longer make sense for the community in which I live and for the fact that a new high school will literally be constructed across the street. My hope is that as part of this comprehensive plan update, that we could take a look at that neighborhood and make sure that if we're planning for the long term, we're anticipating the construction of a high school, as that's a major undertaking. We can't just say, "Well, that's technically in the city of Issaquah. It doesn't affect our community." No, no. The entirety of that site is surrounded by a retirement community, Providence Point, on the Issaquah side. Foot and vehicular traffic will not be going through that private community. It will all be going on the opposite side of the street in our outmoded neighborhood that has no sewer, no sidewalks, no curb, no gutter, limited streetlights, limited fire hydrants, and everything involved. So, I sent a letter to you this evening detailing what I view as the issues through my lens as a land use, real estate, and environmental law attorney. I know that the city has a tremendous amount, and you as the Planning Commission, on your plate right now in this comprehensive plan process. And a lot of that is due to the fact that our state legislature has been very active in throwing curveballs at our city. But I want to make sure that this issue remains on your radar, that you understand what those planning challenges are, and that we have a walkable zone by that high school that actually makes sense from a land use planning standpoint. Appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for non-agenda?
My name is Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish for 24 years. So for non-agenda, I wanted to say a couple different things. I think I've mentioned it before. I grew up in the city of Bozeman, Montana, and I attend some of those meetings remotely for their, kind of their, planning board and their city commission, they call it. They had a consultant from Denver, Colorado, who's quite good, and he spoke to both of those bodies back in June and the prior year. And they have done multiple studies for the city of Bozeman with regard to if you're growing and you're building, how much do you need to support a commercial area? So I watched recently two meetings that were done about a year, year and a half ago, and he gave it twice, but he gave different information. And the really key point to it is, if you're going to have a neighborhood commercial, which is not like a town center commercial, so it'd be smaller, a neighborhood commercial, you need 3,300 rooftops. But it's not rooftops because a rooftop can have multiple units, so it's actual dwellings. So you need 3,300 dwellings in an area to provide enough people there that are going to shop and move and go through and have transit to work. So I think as we're considering land use things in town center, I was at the ground, or the, excuse me, the, what is it, what they did though, the golden shovels, we really need to think, if we try to make town center too small, or if we don't plan for areas like this gentleman spoke for, you're going to have a city where you've got people that have to drive to everything because the only way to get there is to drive. You don't get stacked units because I think David Pyle has talked about, the only way to get the real density is to have stacked flats, and you need to have them in a town center area. And then our famous, Paul Stickney, who's our local housing guru, and I'm the stormwater sort of crabby person, Paul Stickney has said that you need to have more units than what you have, and that even our town center, at the largest buildout, will be the smallest town center in the entire part of this whole area, Bellevue and all that. So I think we need to think a little bit bigger. And then I just wanted to say something that's not agenda-related. It's called the landslide hazard drainage area. So I don't know if you can see this map. This was produced by Tony Dolls all during stormwater. The orange is landslide hazard areas. The yellow is landslide hazard area. There was a mis-mapping for tamarack, which left us naked with no protection area. So I have seen this tamarack map before. There are 77 homes here that were not under landslide hazard drainage area. So whenever you're doing stormwater code, people go, "Hey, I can just build, or I'm doing this, I can build without a development, or I can make small changes." And those cumulatively add up, and when you're putting water either on the ground and dispersing it, or digging in it and infiltrating it, you end up with problems lower down. So that's one of the reasons you hear from me so much. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else in the room for non-agenda? Okay, how about on the meeting?
We have one hand raised. Paul Stickney, I'm going to promote you now.
Paul Stickney, Sammamish. You know, when, back in the 60s, I liked rock and roll quite a bit. I still do. But one of my favorite bands was The Doors, Jim Morrison and The Doors. They had an interesting song called "Five to One." I liked the beat. I liked the message back at the time. Well, I want to change that lyric to roughly four to one. When it comes to traffic generation by housing type, two measured studies that Farron Peers did for Dick Bergen and myself back in 2015 and 16, we hung cameras, we didn't, we had the consultant do it, on the Safran apartment complex and on the two Starwood condominiums in Issaquah. And they both have a unique feature that's important. They have garages for the residents different than the parking for commercial, so you can measure residential unit car trips. Now, I need to add another one in front of my time to, or more, to really explain all the detail. And I'd be happy to, because many of you are engineering background, specific, and in the weeds. But I will get to the end game. The chip, the trip generation of cars was approximately a quarter that of single-family homes in Safran, and the same thing for Starwood. And that's a sample of studio one and two-bedroom housing units without transit, but they are walkable to amenities. So what my four to one is, and I'd like to talk more about it, is there is real opportunity to right-size housing units we need in town center now, other centers later, with far less traffic than single-family homes. And then if you include transit, that might happen because of critical mass on size, those trips from a citywide holistic perspective may even go down. So there's been a big pushback for any kind of increase in housing. What I'd like to assert is there is a big case to be made for different and diverse housing in a compact form that meets community needs, both market and not. So anyway, look at my non-agenda comment. Hangs together with comp plan recommendations I made, and that's what I wanted to mention tonight. Appreciate the chance for the non-agenda.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else in the meeting?
No more hands raised.
Okay. Now I'm going to have to scold you guys because you let me blow right past a roll call without doing it. I was just so excited. So let's do that real quick. Hisham Alcoat.
Here.
Sayed Savabian.
Here.
Ajay Chakravarti.
Here.
I am Mark Boffman, and I'm here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Sudha Sankara.
Here.
And Mike Briscoe.
Here.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Sorry about that. All right, let's get to our main topics for the evening. The first one is our critical areas ordinance update. And I just want to kind of remind everybody, we have two heavy topics again this evening, and we have technically an hour and 15 minutes. No. An hour and 45 minutes. Sorry, I did the math in my head a minute ago. So I may remind you halfway through that time, that we're halfway through if we're falling behind, just not as a telling you to stop or anything like that, but just as an encouragement to watch the time. Okay? Let's go ahead and get started with critical areas ordinance update.
Thanks, Mark. I'm Nell Lund. I'm a senior ecologist with Facet, and then my colleague, Dan Nickel, the director of our environmental planning group, is joining us remotely. We're the environmental consultants helping with the CAO update. As you know, this is our, I think, our third time in front of this group, assisting David Pyle and the planning group. And Jackie is out today, so she asked me to give, start with an overview of where we're at in the process, so. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to review the critical area ordinance. We'll go over the project timeline, review our decision points that were brought to the City Council May 7th, and then dive into discussion questions, and hand the floor over to the Commission for comments and questions. So the project timeline, a quick overview, this, the planning department met with this group in October during the joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting, and presented findings of the review and analysis of the current critical areas ordinance, provided the best available science and existing conditions reports, along with the gap analysis, which are still available on the city's website. And since then, we've had two work sessions with the Planning Commission to review proposed changes. We met, the city met with the Parks Commission and Sustainability Commission to give them project overviews on May 7th, reviewed several key decision points with the council to get some direction from them. And then we'll be returning to the Commission on July 18th for your public hearing, when we return to the council in October for a review of the draft before public hearings in November. So to quickly go over materials included in tonight's agenda packet, I understand it was lengthy as this topic has been. It includes an overview of critical area types and their proposed changes, then the draft itself. We include a clean version and a redline version to show where changes have been made, and then a matrix that goes line by line and explains why the changes were made. The last exhibit is a cumulative list of our meetings and meeting materials to date. Okay, so this is a summary of the discussion points that we want to go over with this group today. The first one being caras and the need to define injection wells. The reason that this is recommended is it's currently absent in the code, and having them defined allows us, the regulations to clearly detail report requirements and protections associated with those types of drainage features to protect water quality of the critical aquifer recharge areas. The second one, topic item, is compensatory mitigation and the use of off-site banking for mitigation. So the code has been updated to address the different mitigation options for any particular site. It's still prioritized and starts with onsite mitigation. But we recognize that onsite mitigation is not always feasible or successful at a given site. You know, perhaps there isn't room for an adequate buffer, or the available mitigation area onsite is narrow or small and not likely to be successful. So we call that onsite mitigation permitting responsible mitigation, and it has a relatively low success rate. There's a five-year maintenance monitoring period where reports are submitted to the city and need to be reviewed for compliance. So it's a, it's a long process. Compensatory mitigation can sometimes more effectively be achieved off-site through programmatic mitigation options like in-lu fee or mitigation bank. An example of in-lu fee would be the King County Mitigation Reserves Program, and the mitigation bank that the city is in the service area for is Keller Farms. And I know, I think we went over mitigation banks a bit more in the previous meeting, but they are ecology-certified businesses that sell credits for mitigation that they've already implemented on their site. Keller Farms is in city of Redmond along Bear Creek. And it's, the advantages of that program are that it's guaranteed success because the, the work has already been done and certified by the Washington State Department of Ecology. And additionally, it reduces oversight onerous for city, for the city. The applicant simply demonstrates that it's necessary, pays the fee, and then everyone moves on. The next issue that was addressed is temporary or temporal disturbances. So to strengthen requirements to implement mitigation in a timely manner, some proposed amendments were made. And additionally, strengthening the mitigation plan standards ensures that we have a successful project that can adequately replace functions. The reason this is necessary is sometimes construction projects can, can go on, you know, for more than a year, for example, and so temporary impacts become longer and need to be adequately mitigated. Habitat corridor and conservation areas also received an update. The primary focus here is habitat corridors as circumstances, where they're required, and how it's defined in the code was updated. The current definition specifically omits seasonal streams in proximity to wetlands with high habitat functions. You have to be within, I believe it's 200 feet of a perennial non-fish-bearing or a fish-bearing stream. And that limited definition omits some high-quality areas that would be beneficial to retain for corridors. And it also doesn't align with WDFW's current summary of science, which really weights all streams more equally than they have in the past, based on more of a watershed scale function. And then we've also added a species of local importance list using WDFW's priority habitats and species list as our starting point. We've identified keystone species and vulnerable species that we recommend, including above and beyond the threatened and endangered federally listed species. And then, I should probably be calling out the numbers, number five, streams. We have updated the city's definition to more closely align with the Washington Administrative Code in their definition of fish habitat constituting a fish-bearing stream. The current definition relies on presence of salmonids, so this update makes it more inclusive. And we're also updating, recommending an update to terminology for streams and buffers to riparian areas to align with the current best available science, which looks more holistically at the interactions between in-stream and adjacent vegetated area functions, how those two areas interact for things like recruitment of large woodie debris, for example. We are recommending retaining the current stream typing and buffer widths while focusing on maintaining quality conditions within those buffers, as opposed to adopting WDFW's site potential tree height recommendations, which would apply buffers based on a soil analysis and a tree type that's assigned on their broad mapping, as opposed to stream typing. Their stream typing is not part of the site potential tree height system, and it results in very wide buffers, 225 feet, for example, for many sites, and a minimum of 100 feet, which was, which is, which they recommend to remove 95% of pollutants. But the, the city is recognizing, you know, existing urban conditions and the practicality of maintaining their current system. And then number six, maps. Maps, just to, to clarify and clean up some previous application of various maps, we are updating the code to state that all maps are advisory, the exception being critical aquifer recharge areas. Those maps are produced by the water purveyors and incorporated into their plans, and so those maps need to be used as is. And then lastly, and I think, I know David was quite pleased to get a chance to do this, the geologic hazard areas regulations, that section has been cleaned up. Again, the note that all maps are advisory has been updated and clarified in that section. The section was reorganized for clarity and redundancy, particularly with stormwater regulations, was removed. And that pretty much sums up the edits that we wanted to highlight with this group and get feedback on, so I look forward to your questions.
Could I add one comment on, let's see, number, number three. I guess number two and number three. So one of the things we heard from the Parks Commission last night, when we attended the Parks Commission, they gave a presentation, was that there was concern about the, the long-term viability and success of mitigation efforts. So when somebody builds on a property and they have a small wetland area where there's a temporary impact, or where there's maybe a wetland reduction, and there's an enhancement requirement for a buffer or something, and they're required to plant plants and monitor that and maintain it and keep it weed-free, that after that five-year monitoring period goes away, that in the home cells, a new owner moves in and mows it all down. And that's one of the biggest arguments for off-site banking and mitigation is, as Nell said, that it's a guaranteed success. And one of our biggest challenges is managing those sites over time and making sure that what was put in place stays there. So I just wanted to highlight that. That was a, a point of feedback that the Parks Commission wanted us to carry forward to the Planning Commission, was that they thought that mitigation banks and consolidated off-site mitigation efforts might be more successful in the long term as a city.
Okay. Who has comments or questions? Sudha, go ahead.
Thank you for a great presentation, Nell. So number two, it's an off-site mitigation, and you mentioned about the Keller ones in Redmond, right? So would it be off-site means outside Sammamish, or would it be within Sammamish?
That's a great question. Off-site could be in the city or outside of the city.
I can hear you.
Off-site could be in the ci, in the city or outside of the city limits. I guess that's, that's one of the shifts of recognizing that city of Sammamish does not have a mitigation bank in city limits. So if we're going to include that as an option for applicants, then, then we need to acknowledge that that could occur within the service area, which is based on the watershed, not the city boundaries.
Within the service area, though.
Right. Thank you.
Can I add one thing to that? One other challenge that we have with off-site or mitigation banks is that we have not had a strong policy towards allowing that as a city. Therefore, there has been very limited market for that to be something that's established in the city. SAMplat does have their own mitigation bank, for example, within the city that they use when they're doing, say, a pipeline or, you know, something through a wetland. They use their own bank. But we might see if we have a, if we have a policy shift that starts to, you know, say that, yeah, these things might be more favorable in certain instances, we might see that maybe somebody will develop a bank in the city.
I would say, just to pile onto that, I would encourage that that be sort of a intentional thing, just because I think it feels a little bit like we're going to mow down ours, and then we're going to enhance Redmond's. It feels a little, I, I understand from the, you know, service area, what did you call it? The, the wider, broader area watershed. I get what's going on.
Yeah.
But it still feels a little wrong for the people in Sammamish to say. And Sammamish is not like the smallest community land-wise, so it feels like we should be able to figure that out at some point in the future, even if it's not immediately.
In other cities I've worked in, it's been considered as exportation of green space, right? That you're losing green space in your city, and another city is gaining it from your own citizens paying for someone else's green space.
Couple of questions. Can, David, can you give us an example, or maybe the consultant can give us an example of a typical offset banking and mitigation? Example of situation? How would, how would that work?
Yeah, so I've most commonly seen it for linear projects that, like right-of-way improvements often have very, don't have adequate opportunity to mitigate onsite, or don't even have ownership of the land adjacent to do so. When, when mitigation bank credits are purchased for a project, first, they have to go through the standard mitigation sequencing to show that they've avoided minimize, and minimized impacts prior to seeking mitigation. They need to show why onsite mitigation is not a feasible option, and then they, they need to demonstrate that the credits are available for purchase and that that will create the functional lift.
I think a good example is the east, the King County East Lake Sammamish Trail. And when they were building that trail and the various phases that it was built, there were multiple points where they were crossing or impacting a wetland or a stream, and there was not the ability to mitigate onsite because of the linear nature of the trail and the, and in many instances, it was a very small amount of impact, but spread across the longer linear course of the trail. It added up to quite a bit. So what they did was they used, do you know whether which bank they used?
I, I don't offhand.
They, they used a bank. I think it was the one in Redmond, and King County had purchased credits in that bank, and they were able to use that instead of having to do little small bits of mitigation all around the trail, which is really expensive to manage and maintain over time. Instead, they were able to consolidate that all into a bank, and that met their, their mitigation requirements for the project.
Second question has to do with overall, what, what state agency is supposed to review the changes that we're making to critical area ordinance? Is that... Is that Department of Energy? Is that any state department, any, any, any agency? Army Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, I, I, the department, the Washington State Department of Ecology issues critical area ordinance guidance for cities, and they typically review and comment on proposed changes.
And are we supposed to, once everything is done and the council approves these changes, are we supposed to send it to them for verification, for, for their blessing? What is the process?
You know, Dan might know the answer to this.
It's, at the end, you know, it always ends up back at Commerce, right? That's what happens. But we do send them out to State Department of Fish and Wildlife, we send them out to Department of Natural Resources, send them out to the tribe, we send them out to Department of Ecology, and we do take comments from them. We actually have been meeting with all of those agencies as we've worked through these changes, in addition to other stakeholder groups like the Water and Civil Districts and the School Districts. So, we have had quite a bit that you haven't seen of robust outreach on this, where we've met with these agencies and counterparts. You know, we're, we're not in agreement with some of the comments. For example, Department of Fish and Wildlife would very much want us to adopt their site potential tree height tool, but the impacts of that in an urban setting, I think, are untenable for the city. It's just, it simply causes a situation where many of our homes become not legal non-conforming. And we don't want to make homes that we legally permitted, following rules that were in place at the time, legal non-conforming, and we don't really know what that would gain.
So, so are they in a position, or do we need their blessing? Do they have to sign off on all these changes?
We do not. We simply need to show that our rules are achieving a similar outcome, and by way of a different path, and that we're meeting no net losses, no, 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 it's not that one. It's we're meeting the, the best available science component. No net losses shoreline, so I've worked on a lot of these over the years, I get them mixed up. And, and that's what we have Facet for, is to help guide us through that process and, and document how we are meeting best available science. So, what we did, if you recall, is we started off with a, an analysis of our existing conditions. What does our existing rules say? What are the requirements we have in place? Then we did a, a best available science analysis to say, hey, what is, what is the, what are the different reports we're reading about wetlands and streams and slopes and habitat? What do they say? How should we be protecting these resources? Then we do a gap analysis that says, we're doing it this way today, this is what the best practice is, do we meet the best practice today, or do we need to change it? And that's what the gap analysis is. Then we go through a process of identifying where changes need to be made, and coming to you all with proposals to right-size those, those changes. Go to council with some feedback on right-sizing it, where we think there's gonna be some more political activity potentially on something, we wanna get it right. And, and then we ultimately bring it back to you, and we, uh, you know, try to make sure we've, we've got it right, and based on your feedback, and take it to public hearing and take it to council. Council ultimately reviews it, we send it off to Commerce.
And would that become a part of the updated of the comp plan?
It is not. It is a sep, separate rule set. This is a really regulatory.
And how often we have to go through this?
We go through it every 10 years, just like the comp plan.
I see. So, even though it's not a part of the comp plan, but we do it.
It's a Growth Management Act requirement, and usually this would come right after we adopt the comp plan. We would then turn around and adopt the critical areas rules. It's part of the package of enabling rules or, or a regulatory implementation of the comp plan. We do also have Facet and the comp plan team partnered up, and they've been reviewing our policies and our different elements of the comp plan, checking to make sure that we have alignment between our critical areas objectives and rules and, and the comp plan efforts. So, we are also doing that exercise. That was part of the original scope of work and contract. We wanted to make sure that alignment was, was, evaluation on alignment was also taking place.
Thank you very much.
Ajay?
I, just a couple of small questions. The first question is that you said that the onsite banking mitigation is not, is not found to be as effective or successful. So, what, are we completely moving towards off-site, or is that going to still be the case? Or is there's a mix and match of onsite and mitigations and off-site mitigations? Can you help me get the scale of this?
Sure. So, I, I feel like one thing to answer your question that's important to point out is that in the code, these mitigation actions are still prioritized, with onsite being at the top of the list and banking being at the bottom of the list. That might be something that we continue to discuss, but that's currently how it's aligned. And part of that is you, you know, you do value and want to retain your, your critical areas within the city, but the banking option recognizes that sometimes onsite is really not going to achieve the functional lift, either due to, to the site constraints. And it's all, that's also combined with the fact that permitting responsible mitigation is just that, so individual property owners are responsible for establishing the vegetation and achieving the goals and objectives of the mitigation plan, and they don't always do that. But even if, if they are able to do that within a standard five-year monitoring period, then there's the problem of if the property changes hands, you know, will that continue to be protected?
Got it, got it. So, we, we have also been paying attention to all these, these, this analysis, and we're making operational changes as well in the administration of these rules. For example, we need to come up with a better way to put a note on title of the property to make a new property owner aware with a map and it identifies what the constraints are. We also are, are pretty good at, I like to say, holding the door when an applicant comes in with a proposal, and they wanna say, you know, cut down vegetation in a wetland buffer, we say, well, no, you haven't gone through mitigation sequencing, which is avoidance, minimization, then mitigation, right? And they have to show that they have avoided that impact, whether, you know, often, you know, a common one is, we'll see a, a home that's placed on the property, you know, the, the common experience that we have with custom homes in the city is, somebody goes to somewhere like Northwest Architects, no, no offense to them, they design beautiful homes, but they design homes in a vacuum without a site analysis. Somebody will go to this architecture firm and buy the home plans, and then try to force the site to fit the home. And that is not mitigation sequencing. Mitigation sequencing is where you first analyze what you have available on the land, where you could put the home, and then you design the home to fit the land to avoid those impacts. So, we often end up in that back and forth with applicants, and these are some hard conversations, because if you've ever experienced designing a home, you know, between a couple or a family, i- it's a very intense process. So, by the time we end up, they have to change the closet, move a bedroom, do all these things, they're not too happy with us. So, you know, that, that's part of that process, and so I, I would say that mitigation, and first of all, whether or not it's even required, is a result of us meeting early with an applicant or a property owner, when they have an idea that they wanna do something on their property, and making sure they're fully informed of the rules and the process that's required to get to a permit being granted.
Got it. Thank you. And about not being happy, I can tell you that the couples are not happy within themselves as a personal experience, so.
And can I follow up on Ajay's question? Item number two, David, does it apply to town center?
It does apply to town center. But again, but again, they're required to go through, e- even the city it applies to. You know, the city has own, its own infrastructure projects. All projects where there is a proposed or potential impact to a wetland or stream buffer or slope, or, or habitat, is required to go through a, a mitigation sequencing analysis.
So, did they go through with the groundbreaking ceremony of the new, of the first?
They, they did. So, so there was one wetland that was a category four wetland, which is a very low-class wetland, very small in size, not hydrologically connected to any other wetlands, previously modified in mode, very little structure, there wasn't, you know, large native trees growing in it. And the result of the analysis at the end was that they, it was better off mitigating for that than, and allowing it to, to be displaced.
Mitigating onsite or offsite?
Um, they, I believe it's offsite with a, with an offsite, just because of the viability of where would you put that, if that's a very, you know, it's a feature that doesn't really, it's not really amenable to moving it somewhere else.
So, here, you heard my question in my mind? That was my second question. My, my thing was that that means that if we were to set up a sub area near East Lake Sammamish Parkway, then that will automatically become part of the onsite review and the prioritization that you were talking about at the start of the meeting. Am I right about that?
What, what type of feature near the Parkway?
Now, if I, if I said that we wanna create a sub area in, in East Lake, near East Lake Sammamish Parkway, it will go through the prioritization that you were talking about, onsite and then going down, to figure out which is the best way that we can handle that thing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be part of the larger planning process, but it would really take effect at the point of permit, of actual development permit.
Got it. Perfect. Thanks.
Don't tell anybody, but your description of a small area that's wet and previously mowed is a good description of my backyard, so I think I have a wetland. Who else has a question or comment? John, go ahead.
Okay, I wanna get a little more granular. On page 204 in the matrix, new requirement for hazard tree removal for consistency with best available science. So, you know, most of the, the change looks really reasonable, but the very end, it still says that hazard tree has, once it's taken down or created a snag or whatever, has to be replaced with X number of trees. Can that now be done offsite, if it makes sense?
Can you remind me of the, of the page number in the packet?
204. Well, it's, it's page 204 of 387.
204 of 377?
387. It's on the, the left side of the page numbers. And I guess my, my question really applies to all tree replacements, because, okay, you've got a critical area buffer that started with alders, and the evergreens are starting to shade out the alders. The alders only have a lifespan of about 60 years. So, that's the natural progression of things that they're eventually gonna, the alders are gonna fail.
I wanna get to the page, I'm sorry. I, I'm seeing, I'm seeing 377 pages in the packet.
Oh, okay.
It might be that you're on a different type of computer or the different size page.
No, it's, um, this is physically on the page. Yeah, not, not the computer pages, but the PDF pages. It's in the matrix.
In the left-hand column, what, what code reference?
Oh, F6, F5C.
So, it looks like we've gone too far.
So, I'll continue my diatribe while you're finding the page. In our environment, an understory tree that is failing because it's getting shaded out, you know, things progress, you come in and replace it with three new trees that aren't even gonna last five years, because they're understory and are shaded out. So, you know, there, there are options to onsite mitigation to, other than just replacing trees that aren't gonna survive. You know, you've got invasive species that could be removed, blackberries and English ivy, you've got wildfire hazard mitigation, removing woody, woody debris, you know, cleaning up a site so it's, remains healthy. What? Or then, the offsite option of planting those trees somewhere else where they will be successful. But just, in my mind, just replacing a tree, just because one's taken out or died, may not be the best solution.
I apologize, I'm still trying to find the right page.
Especially if the tree died for a reason, right? I mean, if it died because of, changed the area.
Well, yeah, so the, the city does, this is more, more, I guess, of a comp plan reference, but the city does have a strategic tree plan with entry canopy cover targets for the city. So, tree replacement regulations generally support those goals to not have a loss in canopy cover. In terms of which, you know, right species, right place, I think that would be assessed on a site-specific basis, and there should be an arborist involved in making the decision to select the appropriate tree for that location.
Doesn't the, sorry, I just, doesn't the, the fa, the clause that it should be a native tree actually cover for that? Because a native tree would not need all of those care, I mean, that review and the arborist recommendations and all of those things?
That, that's a good comment. So, the, the native species requirement is pretty typical of any critical area regulations, 'cause the intent is to keep that native condition. But we still need an arborist input to pick the right tree for the right place. You know, some species can sustain wetter conditions versus drier conditions, like, like a sickus spruce, doesn't mind if its roots are wet, but a dug fir generally likes to be drier.
Okay. So, it's very possible, something that's not visible for me, that a tree could be thriving in, let's say, Mark's property, but not at all sustainable for my property. Is that a, is that a valid statement?
Correct. Yeah, not, not all native species are going to do well everywhere, right? You still have to look at the site-specific conditions.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know that. Something to know today. Yes, thank you.
John, I wanna go back to you. Did you have other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little baffled about, you've got a mature stand in a protected critical area, and planting virtually anything in the understory isn't gonna make it. There's no, there's no way to replace that, that tree you lost, and you probably haven't even lost any measurable tree canopy, because it got shaded out and died. So, you know, we have to look at maybe over the horizon here a little bit, 'cause trees tend to get bigger, and just going in to plant three trees because you've taken one out in a location doesn't mean that they're even gonna survive, or you're gonna be able to get that tree canopy back. I don't, I don't have an answer, other than possibly some off-site mitigation, when it makes sense.
So, I'm gonna admit, I'm a little dense here, I'm trying to follow along, and there's a difference between your packet and this packet, so that, to me, we're gonna have to fix that, I'm flagging that for tomorrow morning with a conversation internally. So, I, I think, I'm trying to understand, basically, it looks like there's an exception here that allows for hazard tree removal when consistent with best available science. And what I'm understanding is that, that if a hazard tree is identified by a qualified professional, the, the tree can be removed, the creation of snags, retention of stumps, et cetera, is required when feasible, that's usually something we like to see. And if a hazard tree meets the criteria above, the tree removed, critical areas must be replaced with an appropriate native tree at the ratios designated in the tree replacement standards, which are not high, right? You know, they're, it requires replacement in a certain-sized tree, but, so, so, basically what this is saying is if you've got a dead disease or dying tree, or a tree that's structurally damaged in a way that if there were a windstorm, or there were some sort of event, that it could fail and cause damage to property or life, which is usually the criteria for hazard tree rating, then it could be removed. And it would be require replacement of trees in accordance with the tree rules. So, now that I understand that, and I was able to find it, it took me a minute to catch up, what was the issue?
We've got a lot of We've got a lot of second growth that's getting into 100-plus years. And so you have a critical area, even if it's got just dog hair, fur on it, you know, that six, eight-inch bean poles. You plant something in that understory because it's a constrained area. You only have so much area. It's not gonna make it. You're gonna put a, two or three trees in there to replace it and have, end up having no effect. And the site might have other issues with invasive species, English ivy being a big one around here. Or you've got a, a big load of understory dead wood that needs to get cleaned up. Is there a way? That, okay, replacement is number one, just like you had on, on offsite mitigations lowest. But could an applicant come back with a plan, say, "Look, putting a new tree in there, it's gonna die. But if I do this, I'll enhance the site."
So vegetation management plan, essentially, that, that achieves an equivalent or better outcome based on the conditions of the site that might not be, might not be amenable to replanting.
Exactly.
About that?
Yeah, that's, that's something we could take a look at.
Doesn't have to be the top one. Tree replacement's still top. But give our property owners some mechanisms to maintain the health of that property and not have a failure.
Thank you for that comment.
John, is that in lieu of offsite mitigation?
Well, well, in my mind, it would be tree replacement first, as required by code. Onsite mitigation of some sort, a native vegetation management plan. And then third would be offsite.
So it could be either or.
Yeah, you go, just like David said, you go through the priorities first to get the best solution.
Hisham, have you got any questions or comments? Okay, Mike?
I, I have one, I think, basic question and maybe another comment. The, the decision matrix, you had a, a change from stream to riparian, right? What effect does that have on the buffer? Was the buffer measured from stream center or bank? And now with the riparian area, it's now wider because, just curious about that because that seemed like it was, you know, less than clear when I was going through the code.
That's a good point. And the riparian area language, introducing that into the code, is actually something that I realize we need to take another look at as we, as we go through the code again. For clarity, the, the buffer would still be measured from the ordinary high watermark of the stream. So there wouldn't, there would be no change to the designation of the stream, the typing, and then the measurement of the buffer.
Okay. I'm just curious. So then, changing the, the term from stream to riparian, what, what effect does that have then on how people will be impacted by the code?
Yeah, it's, and, and Dan, I don't know if you want to jump in on this, but it was something that we suggested just to acknowledge the directional shift in, in the best available science and the recommended regulatory approach for these areas from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Their, their current recommendations with the site potential tree height and kind of, you know, no longer implementing the stream typing as we know it is a, is a big paradigm shift. And their tools for implementing it are really preliminary and have a lot of, we had a lot of concern about being able to implement those systematically and reliably as well as, as David mentioned, the non-conforming existing uses, concerns. But incorporating the language in the code acknowledges that directional shift. It's one of the ways that we're recommending recognizing and incorporating the best available science. But it, substantially, it's not changing the regulatory area.
I could, I think I understood that.
Did I ramble a bit?
Add something to that. No, that was really good. But I also want to add that under state law, under WAC 365-196485, we do not actually have a requirement for streams specifically. Instead, we have a requirement for fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And within fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas are streams, wildlife corridors, other things. We do have a, a specific requirement for wetlands in that rule set. So what's happening here is that streams are being seen more than just the, the channel of the stream. It's a fish and wildlife habitat conservation area where there is that inherent interaction between the aquatic resource and the upland that's occurring, both in terms of vegetation and in terms of wildlife and, and all those interactions are taking place, that is a riparian area. So I think what we're really doing is we're really getting closer to what the state law is saying with regard to managing it as a fish and wildlife habitat conservation area as opposed to just a stream.
And, and the reason I was asking is, and that makes sense, right? But if the, the area that is that corridor and supporting the wildlife happens to be broader than what the typical buffer was, whatever is 50 feet or 150, and, and that's part of the, the ecology of that particular area, then it could have an impact on what the appropriate buffer should be, potentially. And, and maybe in really rare cases, because some of the buffers are, you know, they go up a fair, fair distance from where the, the high watermark is on the bank. So that's, that's why I was asking if that needs to have some clarification.
There, there are instances where our buffers are insufficient for what is onsite. We have seen sites where the buffer stops and the, you know, the beautiful canopy and understory and native vegetation continues. And the developer comes and basically cuts everything down right up to that line, right? But we don't, we, we're trying to add some enhanced rules regarding habitat that would allow for that to be expanded under, under the habitat section, right? So, so that if you did have that scenario, they would be required to retain some of the features and function, the structure, the, you know, the individual things you might find under the habitat section as well, layered on top of the riparian area stream buffer rules.
And that's in the red line? That's been added to the code now?
Correct, under the fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas.
That's helpful. It's hard to, you know, when you're reading through all of this stuff, to understand those interactions when you're
Right.
not an expert. The other question I have is the geologic hazardous areas. And there's specific changes, and I'm gonna channel Mary Richter for a moment or two. But we, we hear enough from Mary that, you know, it's hard not to. So consider allowing for reduction of the required development buffer from a landside hazard area when suitable assessment is performed. And if I understand some of the comments that Mary has made, it's not necessarily, like, there's one development, you do an assessment, you know, geologic engineer comes in. It's more the cumulative effect in an area? And I'm wondering, you know, how that all stacks up? Because it's not just, you know, the impact of one development, like one house going in, as Phil. Then there's another one, you know, six months later, and another one, another one. So how does that, the analysis that the engineer will perform, be able to address this kind of cumulative effect?
So we require that a licensed qualified professional is somebody who does an assessment. And, and I don't know if we've written it into the definition for the purpose of geotechnical engineering. There is no such thing as a license in Washington State for a geotechnical engineer. It doesn't exist. You're either a civil engineer or you're a licensed geologist, right? So what we require is that geotech reports that are submitted are authored and signed by both a civil and a geologist, right? For both licenses to be represented. The, the geologist looks at the land form, makes assessments on how that land form might have been created, that feature might have been created. The engineer is there to look at stability, that if you're gonna build on it, what, what types of, you know, what, what I want to call it, things are you gonna incorporate, you know, pile, piling, different type of fill, different type of drainage to make sure that it remains stable, right? So I think one thing we could do that I don't know if we've done, but this is actually, I appreciate the feedback, and is, is that we require as part of a geotech report that the, the geologist does an analysis regarding the cumulative impact of this project in conjunction with any other past development activity. I don't know that we can, we can, you know, forecast forward, but we could think backwards as to, hey, this is over here, this is over here, this is not an island, right? And all these sites fit together and what, what is the global implication? Does that?
That makes sense, although one thing that potentially, and I don't, you know, obviously it's my field of expertise, is that in an area where there could be, you know, additional infill developments, you don't know if that's gonna actually happen, but you could say worst-case scenario, what happens if several of these areas are built? And what impact would that have to the geology of the area? So that's, that's, you know, something I think you ought to at least think about.
Yeah, I echo David's. I think that's a good comment that we can follow up with. HWA Geosciences are, are subconsultant on that. I do recall in the best available science review that, that it specifically mentioned reporting should look beyond the site itself for those sort of cumulative impacts that you mentioned. So we can take another look at it and make sure that the reporting criteria adequately addresses that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
My one question is, and maybe we've covered this and I've lost track of it, but can you speak a bit more about injection wells? And I can't remember exactly what the question you had on the list was, but it seemed like it said, include the definition of injection wells. And when I look in, at least the packet here, what I see is only one place where it's defined. And it looks like it's been there before. I, I'm trying to track this. So I'm not sure what the question is, and I would, in addition to that, though, say that the definition seems like it could be more specific in a few ways. It's, it's pretty broad. I mean, it includes everything from, you know, dry wells to septic systems, to everything, and there's very little restriction around it. So I, I'm, like I said, I'm just not tracking exactly what the question was and what I see here.
Okay. We can certainly take another look at that. I know we updated both the definitions section, the 2104, oh four oh, as well as the critical area regulations. And I know in the critical area regulations in the CARA section that we added new reporting requirements for injection wells. And that, that was taken from Washington State Department of Ecology guidance. There's, there's a new, new section on the reporting requirements. So we can take another look and make sure that ties back appropriately to the definition itself.
Also want to say that we've been working largely on the recommendation of the, the water and sewer districts because their ultimate object, objective here is to ensure that waters that are ultimately infiltrating down into our aquifers are clean. And we really take their recommendations as the engineers that study their aquifer and understand how things move around in there and how we might regulate that. So a lot of what you're seeing, and we've had a lot of meetings with them where they've made specific code recommendations to us, and what you're seeing here is what they want to see in our code in order to make sure that they have opportunity to, number one, first and foremost, be aware of any type of facility that's proposed. And number two, have the opportunity to review that type of facility. And number three, have the ability to require changes to it or that it not be allowed.
So I guess I would say to all of that, okay, I did the dumb guy thing and I just searched the document for injection. And I found a definition in two places, the old copy of the code and the new copy of the code, and that's same language. And so I'm not sure, again, you know, there, it's, it's referenced in many other places, but none, none of those are definitions. And then I would just say, in addition to that, I'm not a water district expert or a geologist. However, I would say this definition is pretty broad, so there's very little about. I guess I'd like to see, if we're actually gonna talk about this, I'd like to see somebody who is an expert comment on this definition. And, and as a, as a resident of the city, I would love to see something in here about depth. Because to me, injection wells should have a limit on how deep they can go. Because the whole purpose of this is to facilitate the water not running across the ground, but going into the ground. But you don't want it to go too far because you want the ground to do its job and filter the water. This doesn't say anything about any of that. It just says things like, oh, bored hole that's, you know, deeper than it is wide. I don't know what that, what that means.
I think looking, you have to look a little deeper into the code. I'm looking at it right now and I'm seeing the section that talks about infiltration or injection or stormwater reclaim water. And there's a whole section that talks about, it's not so much how it's defined, but it's, and maybe we didn't do justice to it here to saying how it's defined. It's more how it's managed, right? And this goes on to say, "For all proposals that include infiltration or injection of stormwater, unless weighed by the city and the local water purveyor, the following information must be provided." Then it goes into quite a bit of detail. There's a couple, you know, there's a page of requirements. You know, a hydrologic, a hydrogeologic report prepared by a qualified professional, et cetera, et cetera, talking about the location, the depth, the treatment and infiltration injection, contributing area and infiltration, depth of the shallowest groundwater, and all these things that are required to be part of that report. So I would say that we might not have presented it properly here. Apologies there. I think instead what we're doing is we're, we're clarifying how the definition works in relationship to what the requirements are for somebody when they're actually proposing one of those things.
Was what? You just read something that's new language?
It's all new language. Yeah, it's, it's, there's a whole new section in here that comes right after the injection wells. I was gonna try and find that section.
If I can search more for it myself, but.
And we, we can confirm, review and confirm the definition as is, but I think the reason it's so broad, it's my understanding, the reason it's so broad is because the, those depths can vary so greatly to, you know, depending on site-specific conditions. So I think it's purposefully written that way to be more inclusive. And then, as David mentioned, these reporting requirements get to the site-specific assessment.
Okay. Anybody else have anything more? Cool, we're almost right on time. Thank you.
I, I want to say this is great feedback. So, you know, I've heard a few things here that help us go back and make some final tweaks to this and also make sure that we are calling things out properly. It's not just the definition, it's how it's managed. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's definitely a planning commission-type stuff. Because you gotta like trees and rainwater. Yeah, in the weeds, literally. Okay, let's move on to our next topic for this evening, which is guidance on middle housing requirements and some discussion on the development regulations.
Great. So I'll go ahead and introduce it while Tyler with Framework gets set up here. So we tonight have a workshop for you with regard to the middle housing HB 1110 and the ADU bill, which I can't remember the number of, I apologize, and, and how that will, will potentially work with the city. We have, Tyler, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and I believe Tyler has a presentation. And then after the presentation, we will get into some dialogue with the commission on the topic.
Excellent. Thank you, David. It looks like I just froze. Can I get a, just an indication from someone that you're hearing me?
We're good. We got you. We can hear you and we can see the screen.
You're seeing me? Okay. Appreciate that. Well, hello, everyone. Tyler Quinn Smith here from Frameworks, filling in for Jeff Arango this evening. Thank you, Planning Commission. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, David, for the opportunity to bring another presentation and discussion related to the, the comprehensive plan periodic update for 2024. This evening, we're focused on the code update end of this larger project and a subset of the code updates focusing explicitly on the middle housing approach, regulatory approach, across the city. regulatory approach across the city. So this evening, I'm going to start us off with some reminders about the state legislation that is driving a lot of this work. We'll also talk about the ongoing and past planning efforts that support and align with middle housing regulation and implementation. And then the majority of the evening, I will walk us through some more technical material. We have a handful of topics we'd like to provide, or we would like you to provide feedback on. And these are various regulatory mechanisms that we are considering to use when implementing middle housing across the city of Semamish. So starting with a reminder of the fairly active legislative session that wrapped up a year ago. Headlined in that session was HB 1110. This bill for cities of Semamish's size requires two units per lot on all residential lots. With four units being allowed if one of the units is set aside to be affordable. We'll talk a bit about the nuances of that affordability condition. But that's the kind of the baseline. The, the highlight of that bill rather. In addition to the middle housing bill, the legislature passed a handful of ADU bills that allow cities or require cities of all sizes within the UGA to allow two accessory dwelling units in any configuration on all residential lots. So combined together, we are striving to comply with a baseline requirement of three units per lot, four units if one is affordable. These graphics here are just designed to show how under kind of existing conditions, two and four units could transpire across the city of Semamish. We will discuss at length, I'm sure, our regulatory approach to middle housing, which includes a middle housing overlay that would provide kind of an alternative path for projects that include middle housing instead of using the underlying zoning. But this is just taking into considerate, into consideration, excuse me, the underlying zoning for the R4 district. So R4 being a district that limits its densities to four dwelling units an acre. Those effectively become quarter acre lots. A duplex on a quarter acre lot in the R4 district now would produce eight units an acre. Four units on those lots would produce 16 units an acre. This is another diagram to just show the number of housing types that are enabled by this bill and how they could look and feel across a density limitation of 12 units an acre. So here we have the lot sizes corresponding or growing with the number of units that are on the lot. So any lot in isolation here amounts to 12 units an acre. From kind of the least intensive form of development on the right, single family home and a detached accessory dwelling unit moving through duplex, triplex, four, five, six plex, six townhomes and a cottage court in the top left. Okay, now I just want to ground this in some of the past and ongoing planning work around housing that the city has done. So I'm actually going to draw your attention to the right side of the screen here to discuss some of the strategies and goals that were passed with the Housing Diversification Toolkit last year. So this is the city's equivalent of a housing action plan. Among other actions passed by city council and planning commission in the Housing Diversification Toolkit are a handful of kind of strategies to further friendly zoning to middle, missing middle housing. The strategy and goal to, to, to consider minimum density requirements across Semamish's residential zones and then kind of more friendly requirements and incentives to encourage cottage housing. Okay, on the left, we have envisioned Semamish. So this is the ongoing comprehensive plan for which we are writing these code updates for. So in the draft housing element for that plan, there are a number of goals and policies that indirectly, indirectly discuss the need for and the aspirations for more housing choice across Semamish's neighborhoods. We pulled out four policies that are probably most directly connected to middle housing. Starting at the top and moving through, we have, you know, just the, the direction to permit, encourage, promote residential densities, more housing choices across cities' neighborhoods. Policies and code amendments that promote and make feasible a range of housing types to increase the, the options of housing that are made or that are available to Semamish's current and future residents. Regulations, procedures for permitting, et cetera, that make developing these forms of housing friendly, streamlined, et cetera. So there is quite a bit of policy that has been adopted and that is in the process of refinement that supports the middle housing code amendments that we're discussing tonight. Okay, now moving into the meat of the presentation, I have a series of topics that I will attempt to articulate as clearly as I can. But I will admit that this is technical material and we're here to discuss at the end. So I'll, I'll go through each of these topics and then we'll, we have lots of time set aside to revisit them and get your feedback. Beginning with the establishment of a minimum lot size. So under current regulations, the city does not implement a minimum lot size for residential development in its R zones. And by R zones, I mean the R1, 4, 6, and 8. Currently, what happens is projects default to what we consider the standard lot size. So R1 district being one unit an acre, often projects in that zone default to a one acre lot size or one acre lot with one unit on that lot. And so forth. Our proposal would be to, in the middle housing overlay, there's a lot of layers here to discuss, but let me just pause and remind you all that rather than imposing and integrating new standards and allowances for middle housing in the base zoning, we are suggesting a middle housing overlay that would be an option for projects that are including middle housing in the R1, R4, R6, and R8 districts. So if a development proposal pursues the R or the middle housing overlay, we would suggest a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. This is in alignment with the Housing Diversification Toolkit. And in the top right, I will just throughout the presentation, indicate how this particular proposal relates to the existing code and/or the model code that has been put forward by the state for cities implementing the middle housing bills. So in this case, comparing it to Semamish's current code, enforcing a minimum lot size would actually make a slightly stricter regulatory environment. But we believe that this does have many benefits in terms of predictability when it comes to implementing middle housing. And so here on the left, I have a bird's eye view of a project that I think you all are familiar with. This is Highcroft. And I'm just going to use it as a reference to explain the differences in gross and net density and talk through some of the, the benefits that we see transpiring under a minimum lot sized regime. So at the project scale, looking at this entire neighborhood, which is maybe upwards of 10 acres, maybe more. At the project scale, the developer here has stayed within the confines of the, the density limitation for the district, which in this case is six units an acre. However, because they're able to consolidate open space, protect critical areas, kind of limit infrastructure costs by clustering all great things. The, the net density, the site density ends up being much higher than four units an acre. Which for a single family development is fine. And certainly a pattern that we're seeing in many cities across the state. But this particular regime is not as friendly or conducive to, to middle housing because what is happening in, in many cities across Puget Sound and across the nation for that matter, developers are minimizing the lot sizes as much as they can and maximizing the building size. So you get these large, large buildings which are, you know, where the, the sellable square footage is coming from, leaving very little space for open space and, and, you know, stormwater detention, et cetera. Yes, that's done on other parts of this site. But we bring this example forward just to show the rationale for implementing a minimum lot size for middle housing, which provide larger lots that enable better access to the units, more functional open space on the lots. And, and, and more. And so we can return to this kind of subdivision example as we go through the night just because there are some different kind of considerations that come when thinking about new neighborhood development or new subdivision development like this, when lots of homes are built at once and then a single site in development for middle housing. Okay, moving on to the next topic, floor area ratio. This is among the many kind of mechanisms in the existing zoning code. As it stands today, Semamish enforces, I believe, a floor area ratio of point five or 50% for single family development. What this means, and I'll, I'll point you to the graphic on the right here. What this means for a 6,000 square foot lot is that the development rights that is entitled to that lot is only 50% of the lot area. So for a 6,000 square foot lot, that means you can, you have 3,000 square foot speeds to play with in your house or in your residential development. And this can occur across any number of floors, so long as the, the building stays within the height limit for the district. Our suggestion would be to increase the FAR limitations according to the number of units on the site past two units. And that is because under current, under the current code, ADUs are exempt from the floor area ratio requirement. So we would suggest that beyond two units, starting with three units, we allow progressively more floor area entitlement on those sites. So here's a table looking at how would, how that would work. Excuse me, with, with, once again, a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. You apply that and get the total number of square feet that is entitled for that lot split across the number of units on the far left, you result in the unit sizes on the far right. So these unit sizes, anywhere between 1,400 and 1,900 square feet are conducive to family size housing. In many cases, these are comfortable for two, three, maybe even four bedroom units. This particular regime would be more strict than the model code as well. That, that is, I believe, allowing increments of maybe one, 1.2, maybe a little bit more FAR for, for units in the four, three, four, five unit range. Okay. Building coverage standards are another mechanisms that the city is using to regulate residential development today. As it stands, it varies between the R zones. R1 and R8 do not have building coverage standards. However, R6 and R4 do. They have anywhere between 40% and 50% building coverage permitted for single family on, in those zones. And so an example of this, again, is indicated in the diagram to the right. Still focused on lots or a bottom lot of 6,000 square feet with a 50% lot coverage. You get 3,000 square feet to cover. However, this approach does vary with the lot size. So your 50% lot coverage grows to 6,000 square feet on a 12,000 square foot lot. Our proposal here would be to allow slightly progressive building coverage limitations dependent on the number of the units on the site. And as with other mechanisms this evening, some of the, many of the city's ongoing kind of development goals for the retention of open space, preservation of tree canopy, stormwater management, family size units, et cetera, the management of bulk and scale, those are all achieved under a progressive building coverage standard such as this. Okay, bear with me. We're, we're more than halfway through these. Now moving on to a mechanism that is not currently used in the city zoning code, and that is a maximum building footprint standard. So this would be something we suggest the city uses in lieu of, or instead of, the building coverage standard. It wouldn't necessarily make sense to use both building coverage and a maximum footprint. Let me explain the maximum footprint. This would apply to all sites of all sizes with any number of units. Our suggestion would be to implement a maximum building footprint of 2,500 square feet. And so this does not change with the, the size of the lot, unlike this last example of building foot or building coverage. The building footprint, even on a large 2,000 square foot lot, you only get 2,500 square feet of buildable foundation, if you will. This is a great approach to ensure neighborhood kind of contextual development, just because the existing development standard is a little bit more incremental, smaller frontages, smaller buildings, rather than allowing large footprint buildings, this on larger sites, this mechanism would in fact produce more buildings, more smaller buildings, which is closely aligned or more closely aligned with the existing development patterns in Semamish's neighborhoods. This is not a mechanism used in the model code. However, it's an additional layer that, that development would have to abide by making this particular proposal a little bit more stringent than the model code. Okay. The requirement of alleyways is not a feature of the existing code. As far as I believe, I actually may have misspoken there, but our proposal moving forward would be in new developments and in new subdivisions like Highcroft, Croft, excuse me, to allow for better rear access to more lots. Allow, or I mean, require alleyways in these new neighborhoods. So this helps manage the conflicts on the sidewalk, on the street. So by moving the vehicle access to the rear of the building, we can eliminate lots of curb cuts and lots of opportunities for cars and people on foot to have conflict with one another. There's certainly some implications that come with this particular proposal on the public work standards, which we are aware of. And then just from an urban design kind of aesthetic observation, alleyway development does make for a much better building frontage. Again, allowing for a more continuous curb, better protection for pedestrians, less interruption of driveways. You know, we're not having garages on the front of the lot. So there's a lot of, a lot of benefits that would come with this that dip into kind of the aesthetics of neighborhoods as well. Okay. Now on to everyone's favorite topic, parking. The legislation that was introduced last year does have a lot to say about parking. Between the ADU and the, the middle housing bills, the laws stipulate that cities cannot require more than one parking stall per unit on lots smaller than 6,000 square feet. They can only allow or only require up to two units or two stalls per unit on lots larger than 6,000 square feet. Our proposed modifications would be to, would be slightly more permissive than this. And not necessarily correspond to the lot size threshold imposed by the bill. But it would be to, for one, only require one stall per unit after two units of housing. Another feature of our proposed modification Another feature of our proposed modifications is to make use of street parking, of which there is sufficient. Street parking in many of Samamish's neighborhoods. This aligns. Quite nicely with the city's stormwater goals, tree retention goals. I mean, all of the. All of the paving um and grading that comes with driveways and and garages. Really does put a burden on the impervious surface, and if we can make. And take advantage of opportunities to park the cars on the street where there is sufficient, safe. Parking available at the front of these lots, we would suggest a parking waiver for that. Um, where it's not possible to park on the street, the modification would be one, one stall required per unit. Okay, and finally, um, one of the. Uh, remaining stipulations of the eleven-ten bill is the requirement of six of nine housing types. Be allowed in the city's um residential districts. These have been. Vetted and discussed by council, by planning commission in the past. Our. Purpose tonight is just to confirm with you all that these are, in fact, the six of nine. Housing types that you would like the city to permit. Across the residential zones through the implementation of the middle housing overlay. So. Duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhomes, cottages, stacked flats. There are some additional options um such as fiveplex, sixplex. And courtyard buildings, which are not included, but could be. If the city would like to swap out or include more of the six of nine. And this is in alignment with the model code. Okay. I am going to pause. Thank you for your patience. I know there was a lot to get through. Um, this is by all means not my time to talk about next steps, but let's, let's flip back to any of the. Um, various topics that we talked, that I introduced tonight, and we'd love to hear your feedback on on any and all of those topics.
If I could add something to that, just as the tail end of that, that. Thank you, Tyler. That was, that was a great presentation. Really appreciated the effort that went into that and the graphics. Um. I I do want to remind the commission that the council has had several conversations on middle housing, and we have visited the middle housing types. We were given direction on that. I think just revisiting that with the commission and why. We chose to remove the other types. Um, if you have questions on that, I'd be happy to answer that. Um, I do also want to remind the commission that um on the council goals, which are published on the council website. Um, the increase in the production and availability of diverse housing types available to all. Um, is a goal that is cited by the council on the council's goals. So. This plays directly into that, and in addition to it being a state requirement as part of our our comp plan. And development regulations, the council does also have a goal. It's also on the council's uh work plan. For us to take on this type of effort. So there is direction given from the council to. Find a way to make eleven-ten work for the community and to find a way to. Um, add to the diversity and types of housing that we're seeing being developed in the city.
Or try to. Let's uh start on the north side. Um, any of you three have comments or questions? John?
Um, thank you for the presentation, Tyler. It seemed like. A lot of the outline you talked about was for new subdivisions. And kind of looking at the outline that David and Evan gave us in terms of. As David just said, adding housing types. It just, it, sure, there's gonna be some new subdivisions, but one, they're not gonna be very big. Two, they're topographically. Limited, so, you know, if we require alleys would be great, but might not work for every site. Just because of topography. Um. So I, I think I'd like to see a little more focus on infill. You know, adding an ADU, the three that are in Mark's neighborhood. Um, and. You know, uh, someone wants to um. Do a short plat and maybe do a townhome, you know, a couple of townhomes. Um, I'd like. I guess what I'm saying is. Shift the presentation a little bit more towards what we've got on the ground. Um, because the state legislation impacts. With what few unrestricted parcels we have. Um, oh, and then on top of that. Add the additional. Somehow outline the additional stuff for the critical areas, the critical aquifer recharge areas, which. Probably affect a lot of our old non-HOA um neighborhoods. Um, you know, so lot coverage kind of things. So otherwise, I'm there with, I think, you know, the overall concept, but um. Focus a little bit more on. What's in the ground now.
Suda.
I don't have anything.
Mike?
I was hoping you would.
You need a minute?
I I have a couple of uh clarifications, I guess. Um. Uh, Tyler, you mentioned about, and I might work from the bottom up, alleys. So I understand the aesthetics. From the front. Um, it always has seemed to me, though, that uh from a pervious, impervious surface standpoint. And trees and all of that, that you're at, you're adding more pavement in a way. Uh, and and that's different than what you're saying here. So where am I wrong about that? I I, in other words, I don't view alleys as like a positive thing, other than the 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 front aesthetics of the uh, the neighborhood.
Sure. No, that's a, it's a great point, um, Mike, and and well taken. I mean. In fact. On the block's scale, we're requiring some more impervious surface. Uh, through the alley. You're absolutely right. There's no um walking that back. But from. An access perspective and from a lot-to-lot perspective. We see the gains in pervious surface and re- tree retention. Whereas if the lots were to continue to be back-to-back, especially particularly lots that. You know, developers might design to be narrow and deep. It's gonna require a driveway on every single lot to get back behind to the garage. Behind the unit, maybe the garage in the front. I'm not sure whether or not there's a regulation on the siding of garages, but. I would argue, and I don't have, or I would guess, and I don't have the calculations in front of me, but. Once you consider driveways on every single lot. That may very well exceed the impervious surface that's. Made through the alleyway. Um, another point I'll make about the alleyways is that these can be fairly modest. Yes, we would need to align these with the standards for public works, but in many cities. You know, an alleyway of ten or twelve feet, maybe eighteen at the largest. You know, you're kinda, in in many cases, we're seeing driveways that are fifteen, eighteen, twenty feet. Especially if there's a two-car garage. So I'm not saying that I. I am certain on the amount of impervious surface that would transpire across a whole development. But I think that once we take that into consideration, the individual access points, it amounts to maybe more. Um, but uh. It does sound like you understand the access and and maybe the the kind of aesthetic benefits that we're talking about.
Yeah, and I I guess the other piece of it, and you know, as I think about this a little bit more, maybe sketch it out. Uh, like the front and rear picture that you have, you have the garage door right at the alleyway. And so, you know, my thinking is still, I guess, larger lots with larger homes, just like Samamish, you know? And so it it is, I I understand what you're you're saying, and I I. I need to think a little bit more about that, but thanks for that clarification.
I would just say also, other questions go go with that that would require further discussion about the word require, because. Who owns the alley? Who maintains the alley? Does that double the city's miles of maintainable road and the cost to the city and? Or is that a neighborhood? I mean, the management of the stormwater, even if it's not just impervious, it's how many pipes do you gotta put in? How do you manage it? There's a bunch of questions that I would have before I would be willing to allow the word require to come into play.
And I, in addition to that, I could also add to that, more and more we're seeing a trend in the region. That developers are putting their projects on diets because the cost of managing impervious surface is so high. That that is actually more of a factor in design and the amount of impervious surface than a city's development regulations.
Well, that's interesting.
Because stormwater is so expensive to handle. So what we're seeing now is that we might have a. Impervious surface limit, but projects are coming in well under the impervious surface limits. Simply because of a factor, a function of cost of managing it.
Um, hey Tyler, if you can go on, I think it was footprint. And I I just have a question for clarification, because I didn't understand. Um, the difference between the building footprint and the building coverage. And the implications related to those two.
Sure. Great question, and um. I admittedly uh might have been unclear on this because they are very, very close. Let me start with coverage. So just just for clarification, the diagram on the bottom right here. Is divided into six thousand and twelve thousand square foot lots. Um, under a building coverage standard, which is expressed as a percentage. The development or the coverage um. Depends on the lot size. So under existing regulations. Fifty percent lot coverage, let's just say, for example, is permitted for single-family development. You have a six thousand square foot lot. That means you have three thousand square feet that you can cover with the building. Twelve thousand square foot lot, fifty percent of that, six thousand square feet. Okay, so yes, correspond to the lot size, but it is higher impervious surface there. Now. The distinction here is with the footprint. So the footprint, for, excuse me, the footprint standard is not dependent on the lot size. It is a condition that could be imposed on any form of development. In this case, the proposal being twenty-five hundred square feet as the maximum building footprint. That means on a six thousand square foot lot, you get twenty-five thousand or twenty-five hundred square feet of foundation or building. Coverage footprint. On a twelve thousand square foot lot, same deal, per building, though. I will admit this is per building. So, um, hopefully that right there. Clarifies it a little bit. It's just, it's a factor of whether or not the underlying lot size is driving the amount of imperviousness.
Can I, can I add one thing to that, Tyler? So thank you for that explanation. I think the one point, and I think you hit on this a little bit at the end there, was. That under the the lot coverage limitation, that's the maximum total building lot coverage you can have. So you could break it down into multiple buildings, you know, as long as it doesn't add up to more than that. But on the other side, if you go to the other side, this is based on the per building. So ultimately, this becomes a function of the floor-to-area ratio limit. In in terms of the amount of building you can get, because you could have. You know, this is not limiting the number of buildings. It's just simply saying you can't have really large blocky buildings. Because your foundation has to be smaller.
So um, thinking of infill, I've got, I just purchased a quarter acre lot, which is ten thousand some. Ten thousand eight hundred square feet. And this would say that the maximum footprint I could put in by. Code would be twenty-five hundred square feet.
Or or more. I mean, it it's it's not a limit, so so I. You know, from from my perspective, I I think I might have a slightly different perspective than Tyler does, and we'd have to, you know, coordinate this a little bit more. Um, but. I feel like you you do need both the the lot coverage maximum and the the minimum or the the footprint minimum. Excuse me, maximum, because. What would happen then under a six thousand square foot scenario with both of those is you're allowed three thousand under a point five. Or fifty percent lot coverage, you're allowed three thousand square feet total. So you might end up with a. Two thousand square foot footprint and a thousand square foot footprint. Nothing bigger than twenty-five hundred. Right? So what we're saying is, is we're limiting the total amount of building you can put on a lot. But we're also limiting the biggest size of the foundation, the footprint of a building you can put on a lot.
I I think the way to say it is. You can build up to X square feet total. With none of the buildings that make up that X square feet greater than twenty-five hundred square feet.
So if if I've purchased this quarter acre lot, I will be limited to the size of the house. I can't make, build as big a house as I might today.
Uh, under these rules, I think a quarter acre, which is around ten thousand square feet, the math sort of works out randomly exactly to two, twenty-five hundred square foot. Buildings. And then if you, you'd have to say if you had twelve thousand square feet, then you could build another thousand square feet, third building.
Yeah, you understand what I'm trying, I'm trying to just understand. Back to John's comment about, you know, what will happen to infill and what would be allowed. In addition to, you know, when you have a a small development that, you know, would.
I think that, thinking about three different scenarios that I come up with, right, the the most common scenario that we're likely to see in Samamish is. Where somebody has a big lot, a house that's off to the side, and they wanna basically sell off the balance of their land for middle housing. Well, if their lot is not bigger than six thousand square feet, they're not eligible, right? Right away, because you you, your minimum lot size for middle housing for you to be eligible is six thousand square feet. The minimum lot size you can create through a division for middle housing, the next, the next one is you have a tear-down building that's. You could potentially create multiple lots out of a small scale, like a small mom and pop tear-down, you know, division. And you could, you then would be allowed to tear down and and divide, but you would be limited to six thousand square feet in the lot sizes you can create. Right? For middle housing. So thinking about this is, this is a different category than traditional single-family development. You could still develop you under the traditional single-family rules if you wanted to. But if you wanted to take advantage of middle housing, then you have to meet these other parameters, right? And and so then in the case of a large division like, like um our 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 friend's neighborhood. Where where they're large acre lots um down in the the south end of the city, just just east of two-twenty-eighth. Um, they're, you know, they're on septic, say sewer was brought in, say someone was able to buy up a bunch of those lots. And they wanted to do a large division. Well, then you'd be looking at six thousand square foot lots that were created. And on each lot, you could get up to three units. Um, so figuring out what the, what the total buildings, what the maximum building or the. The the maximum building size would be and the total maximum building coverage across that, I think would be really important to have as a, as a. Way to predictably know what could be built. If 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 you wanted to build under the single-family rules and build traditional single-family like what's allowed today. You could do that, but you wouldn't be allowed more than one unit per lot.
And so the last, and this could maybe be tabled, but I'm just wondering about how this then. Uh, works into incentives that would cause developers to say, yep, this is a good thing for me to do and and build the middle housing.
I think that is exactly the the conversation and the tension here is that, and the way we tried to present the agenda bill was that on the one hand. We we are, the state law is very clear. It says that you cannot be more restrictive for middle housing. Than what you have today. So we could allow middle housing today under our current zoning controls. And you'd be allowed to build multiple units, right? Um, but then there's a model ordinance that that, and and that'd be pretty restrictive, like you'd have a really hard time. Building middle housing using the zoning controls we have today because of the point-five FAR, because of the setbacks that we have. Um, because of basically the stuff that we're, that the drivers are towards single-family homes. Um, but on, and and we're not obligated under state law to facilitate middle housing. We're required to allow it. Um, so if you go the full distance to the opposite end of the spectrum, the state. Has worked with consultants and pulled off uh what what we call a model ordinance and a middle housing guidebook, right? And that middle, middle, model ordinance and middle housing guidebook includes um allowing. And that middle, model ordinance and middle housing guidebook includes allowances that the state thinks would be really helpful to incentivize or to facilitate middle housing. So when you see the upper right corner, less permissive than model code, what, what we're trying to do here is find the right size in between our existing single-family rules over here and the model code over here. So wherein, within that range is appropriate for Sammamish, given what we know about our neighborhoods and what we know about the things that people find important. We've done a lot of work with our comp plan, with our development regs phase two. We've heard a lot from the community. So we're trying to find the right fit that follows our council's direction to facilitate it, but doesn't go the whole distance to kind of create sort of a Seattle environment that we don't want here. So we're really working to try and get that right fit, and we've, we've spent a lot of time, you know, on the backend, talking about what the right blend of rules might be. We identified what the tool, what the, what the different dials or levels, levers are, and that's the list. I think that, I don't know, Tyler, if you can go back to that, that page that shows the list of the different dials and levers. There they are, right there. Minimum lot size, four to area ratio, maximum building coverage, maximum building footprint, middle housing types, parking and alleys. And we think these are the right tools that we have to work with in our code. Now we're talking about where do you turn the dial setting to get it right, right? So, and how do they interplay with each other? So that's really what we're, we're trying to get at.
And then the jump in, the, what's been shown is essentially where, you know, you and the consultants are thinking, is that, that right place for Sammamish?
And if you go back, Tyler, to the page that shows the FAR, I think the FAR is the best example where we have the table that shows the number, there we go. So you can see here, you know, that if we were to follow the, under, finding a way to modestly facilitate it, we would end up with two, you know, two unit, two units, the building total size is 3,900 square feet, the footprint isn't bigger than 2,500 square feet, and the square foot per unit is 1,950. That's a marketable unit that's notably smaller. It's almost half the size of most of the homes being built today, maybe even, even less than, you know, or more. Most of the homes we're seeing are between 4 and 5,500 square feet, 1,000 square feet being built today. So this does take, take advantage of that. If you start to see three units, well, you're down to 1,600 square feet. So this is what we think is inappropriate size, given the type of community that we have, the types of families and homeowners that we have, and what might be a good fit for our community.
Can I follow up on Mike's question?
I'm going to shut off my mic and hand over to somebody else, so.
This has gone a long time, but can somebody move to extend, please, first?
Move to extend to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Moving to second, extend to nine. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no thanks.
Can I follow up on Mike's question about his case? And he said that quarter, quarter lot, right? Quarter acre lot. Let's focus on 2,500 square foot as far as, as far as the, the footprint of the building. I didn't hear that much about the building height and the number of stories. So in that example, if the footprint is 2,500, and if I'm allowed to go to three floors, that means 2,500 times three?
We would not, yeah, we, we're not proposing to change the building heights. We definitely would not propose anything higher than 35 feet. If the commission wanted to, and that was your direction, we would go that way, but we're not proposing it.
That question comes up, that 2,500, based on what assumption?
You could fit, depending on grade, three stories. Generally, 35 feet, you're, you're looking at high ceilings, two stories.
So in that example, Mike can go for 7,500 square foot building total?
If, if the grade worked out and you were, you were, you know, using the minimum ceiling height, yep.
Thank you.
Isham?
I have more question, Mr. Chairman, later on.
Good presentation and good options. Just like caution us from becoming like Seattle. If someone wants to live in Seattle, it's 30 minutes away, they can go and live there. We do not want to convert Sammamish to Seattle. Some of the options I saw there will convert Sammamish to Seattle. When we start talking street parking, how many miles of streets do we need to park? The average household nowadays, they have two cars. So let's just do the math and look at new subdivisions, how many street, how many miles of streets do we need? And I go back to what Dave said about, what's the goal here? Is it to add more middle houses? Is it affordability? Is it to increase density? I don't see affordability there. I, I see density, but definitely not affordability. The ones with the alley, I have seen them in Redmond Ridge. Paul Stigman can tell us how much those they sell for. Firefighters and nurses cannot afford those. So if we build them here, they can, they will still not be able to afford them. The cottages down the road here, that Habitat for Humanities did, or the ones by, by Skyline, those, those are good options. But again, those are not to be everywhere. Those are to be in some areas, but definitely not everywhere. The comment Mark did, said a couple of weeks ago, that let's just make sure that we look down the road, we do not try to do something now that end up with consequences that will hurt community. And I'll just leave it there.
Thanks, Sayed.
Well, the argument against Isham's argument is that let's look at the East Coast Highlands. Look at most of the buildings, they don't have parking, they have parking right, right in the back, they have an alleyway, and the building is coming actually to the street. And as I heard from, from Tyler, there are so many advantages to have parking, but parking to be an alleyway. So they're not, we're not necessarily talking about reducing number, number of parking spaces in, in favor of alleyway, but actually we're moving the parking from the front to the back. And there's huge advantage from traffic, from safety, from walkability, from a curb cut and all that, that justifies alleyway and taking advantage of the alleyway for parking. I heard a lot of discussions about that, the surface of the, and the width of the alleyway. Most of the alleyways these days are about 16, 14 to 16 feet. And doesn't have to be paved, it doesn't have to be totally impervious, it can be pervious, and you can, you can do it that way. I've seen some alleyways in, actually in Everett that gravel. Of course, I'm not necessarily recommending it, but we can be creative as far as the surface.
Can I add something here? So, so regarding affordability, so it, I will, I'm not shy in saying that I think, and I'm going to say this out loud, I think the legislature missed the mark. Because what it ultimately did was it provided a windfall to property owners. So, you know, people who own property, property rich are going to get richer. That's just part of the equation here. The, we have been working, I, I do sit on the Regional Coalition for Housing Board, and Regional Coalition for Housing has been working on a proposal to capture some of the upzone that results from this, where if you're building three or more units as a result of middle housing, that you're required to pay a fee in lieu to, of providing affordability into a, an account that the city would hold that could be applied for, to affordable housing projects. That's one thing they're considering. Another is that there be an inclusionary requirement that, you know, if you're building four units, that one of the units is required to be affordable at 80% AMI. And I'm curious what the commission's thoughts are on that, because that's something that Arch is going to ask me to bring to you soon, so I kind of test the water a little bit with that.
I'm, I'm not a big fan of paying a fee and you go and do what you want to do. Because, I mean, if I'm rich, I'll pay you the fee in advance and I'll go and do what I want to do. And it defies, it defies the purpose. Again, if the purpose is affordability and to allow, keep going to nurses and firefighters to live in the city, that defies the purpose. Developers will pay the fee and charge those who will buy the houses.
I tend to agree.
So I go back to my original point of, is this going to be new development or is it going to be infill? And I think the economic play a little bit differently for the infill over new development, or, this is just my personal.
Should we treat them differently?
Well, that's, that's sort of the question is whether we treat it differently, but I think an individual property owner adding an ADU that wants in-home care from, you know, some partnership with that ADU is going to have a much different purpose than a 50-unit development that's probably going to use our existing regulations to build single-family homes. Because there's no incentive, and economically, our area, that's what seems to be the desired property. So I struggle with trying to find how all these pieces are going to fit together.
I think for the affordability, the inclusionary component is challenging because of the scale of potentially, like you said, some of these infill projects. It's hard to require a unit be built when someone's building three, you know, middle housing unit types. So that, that's where Arch sort of steered into the, the fee in lieu is sort of a payment of a partial fee for, and then those could be amassed, and then a project could be built in the city by a not-for-profit developer who could then provide some additional housing. That's the premise of that. So we'll, you know, we'll come back with some more on that here. I think for, for us, what we're really looking for is, you know, do we have the tools right? You know, do you agree that these are good tools to work with, first of all? And then second, you know, working through some of these with regard to, say, I think some of the easy ones are the, the minimum, or excuse me, the, the maximum building's footprint size, the four to area ratios. Do you think that these are pretty close to what we, you know, we, we could, we could use here in the city? And obviously, after this meeting, some of you might have some more feedback on this now that we're, we've sort of discussed it, and, and I, I definitely want to make us available to meet with you if you want, you know, even in the after hours. We can meet virtually or here in the building or whatever, you know, we're available. So definitely want your feedback. And I don't know if the commission wants to go through these and comment on them, or go through the settings, or what you want to do tonight, or if we're sort of at the end of the meeting already.
I think we should finish asking some questions. Before I do that, since you opened the door to editorializing, I'm going to make an editorial comment. My personal opinion, same as what you said, John, my personal opinion is what this is going to do despite the legislature's intent is instead of a three-bedroom house on a quarter acre costing a million five, we're going to end up with a small house, middle housing that's going to cost a million four. And we're not going to really change anything about affordability. It's great news for me because my house is going to be worth a lot more, but I don't think we're going to achieve any affordability because that's just not how it works. So that's my editorializing. So let's go back to Sayed and what other questions you have.
I have a question and a comment. Tyler, is there any way that you can create a matrix to show what we have right now that under the current condition and what you're proposing, side by side? A matrix?
Absolutely.
That would be really helpful to understand the changes.
Yeah. I, it's a great suggestion.
You talk about on and off on every slide that what is existing, but if you put it together in a matrix on one side, one column shows the existing and what you're proposing, and maybe a comment on the side that why you're proposing this, that would be really helpful as far as summary of all the things that we talked about tonight. Think about it.
Absolutely. I wish I had something prepared to summarize, but I think it's, that's absolutely something that we can do.
So I, as a part of your presentation, I heard the word that I was really shocked, manufactured homes? I didn't know that. What, what do we have right now?
I would say modular would be the modern term for that. Manufactured and modular, that does say the same thing ultimately. It's just...
Are we allowing them?
We, we have always allowed them, and in fact, I think there's a big movement in the, in the residential industry to move to modular manufactured homes, which come in in big pieces on trucks, and they're basically dropped on top of the, you know, the floors are stacked, and it's like a, it's like a, literally a 30-day project.
No, it's not a mobile home, is it?
It's, it's, I mean, we, we do allow mobile homes, and mobile homes are different than modular.
Are we allowing mobile homes now?
Than manufactured. We, we do allow mobile homes.
Do we have any?
We do have a few on individual lots. They're allowed through a conditional use permit.
So with these changes, what happens to the manufactured home, mobile homes?
The mobile homes would, would be no different because this is creating a new overlay. What this is doing is creating a whole new set of rules for a different type of development that fits under the definition of middle housing. Those, those archetypes of, of buildings, whether it's a, you know, duplex, a triplex, cottage building, a stacked flat, I think, Tyler, you can go back to that continuum that shows them, that, that, here we go, that's it, right there. If you're building one of these in the city and you want to take advantage of the middle housing rules because it, there is some, there is some, you know, the rules are being created to facilitate these. We're not trying to, we're trying not to create Seattle, but we're, you know, we're trying to get it right because again, on the, on the one hand, we're not required to do anything to facilitate it, but our rules today really wouldn't allow much of that to happen. And our council's work plan and council goals say facilitate this type of housing. So we're trying to find a way, then on the other hand, there's a model ordinance, which if you have a chance to read, it's pushed out by the state. The state is saying, these are the things you need to do cities in your codes to get this type of housing. And oh, by the way, if you don't adopt a middle housing ordinance, then this one under state law is what automatically applies to you.
Well, middle housing, I understand. I'm specifically talking about the manufactured homes. Are we, are we, are there some state guidelines that mandates us as far as the middle housing to go and allow manufactured homes?
No, no. And we're not talking about changing how we handle manufactured homes at all with this. We're just simply talking about these types of housing.
Are you opposed to modular homes?
I don't know. You can justify it, the land is so expensive. Who's going to, who's going to spend half a million dollars to buy a small piece of land and put a manufactured home on the top of it?
Well, just, just to be clear, modular homes are seen as superior in many ways to stick-built onsite-built, built projects because they're built in a climate-controlled environment with a lot of precision. There's less waste. The wood that's used is generally wood that is, is, it's, it's a, it's a type of, it's a, you know, cross-laminated timber that, that it performs more like steel. It doesn't warp, it doesn't expand with moisture. So modular construction, manufactured homes these days are generally seen as superior to, if you can deal with the, you know, the connecting problems, which some, some builders have figured out, others haven't. It really depends on your experience.
They are not trailers.
Yep.
Is your mind in trailers?
By any means, right.
They are not trailers.
Do we have a good examples that we can go and look at?
I think we could find some, you know, there's several down on the Parkway. So some of those, those homes that are, that look like they're containers that are stacked on top of each other, you know, they're, they're not, it depends on who you are, you might like them, you might not. But generally speaking, those are, those came in in two big boxes on a truck with a crane, and they craned it over the trail and dropped it right on the foundation, then they craned the other one in and dropped it right on top of that one. And then the home is done. Well, you have to side it and do all the stuff, but generally speaking, it's...
That would be interesting to see, a $3 million home, and next to it is a modular home.
Well, that, those are, those are $4 million homes.
You can't tell the difference when a modular home is done.
Ready?
No. Looks the same.
So David and Tyler, I think one of the things that we've lost sight of here a little bit, and you started off explaining this being an overlay to our existing, and I, so I think it, like at the top of every slide, you know, get, get your hammer, whack us in the side of the head, and keep reminding us that this is the middle house overlay to our existing development regulations. Say that 50 times, maybe it'll sink in for me.
Ajay?
So Tyler, if you ever wanted to know if this, if this presentation is successful, just look at the spirited discussion we're having. Can I ask you to go to slide eight? Okay, this was answered, this is already gone through in this case, so I don't have a question here. Can we go to slide 10?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, in this one, as you're, as you're talking about retaining the FAR and also increase the FAR .15 per unit, aren't you creating the problem that we, we are basically trying to avoid by increasing this? Doesn't this make bigger homes, more costlier homes? Doesn't this make bigger homes, more costlier homes, and this undercuts middle housing by, by design? If you do it this way? If I was a builder, why would I be, why would I not do this? Because this will end up having bigger homes with point five per unit. People are getting used to more like the stacked units like we talked about. So they will just buy homes and have it like that. Then where does the middle housing come in this whole thing?
That's a good question, and I think that there's this kind of wicked problem that we are up against here with affordability and viability kind of contending with one another. So at the end of the day, developers sell square feet. And our research and work in other cities in the Puget Sound has shown that larger middle housing units are more feasible than smaller units. And so by applying a progressively increased FAR, depending on the number of units in the home, you aren't just taking, you know, your thousand-foot home and saying, okay, if you want two units, you get five. If you want four, you get two fifty each. Yes, the notion of middle housing is to provide smaller, more modest housing opportunities, particularly for, you know, in cities where much of the housing stock, like in Sammish's case, is according to David earlier, four to five thousand square feet for single-family homes. In many cases, that's, that's outpacing the size of households and the trajectory of household size. So, but at the same time, even these progress, these progressive FARs, yes, allow more square footage per unit and larger units than you might expect. They are still much, much, much smaller than what's being built in the city today. And, but there's like, when we're looking at these square footages here, they're still comfortably going to support two, maybe three-bedroom units.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, it's this really tough thing, but like, we need to make it viable by giving them enough square feet to build, but also, you know, striving toward more modest housing options that aren't currently available.
Completely get your point, but what I'm saying is that a builder is gonna come and he's gonna say, I'm gonna create just two-unit things, right? And so that I can get nineteen hundred and fifty square feet and I'm gonna have this thing done. And ten years or twenty years from now, another group of planning commissioners are gonna sit and think, what were the planning commissioners drinking when they were talking about this? Right? Because you've created the same problem. At that time, a nineteen hundred and fifty square feet home would be much more attractive than, than what is a three thousand square feet home today. That's naturally the progression as we're going, as one generation takes on the other generation. So my thing is that, can we rethink this, this matrix that you have over here? And rethink it not in terms of the number of units, but in terms of the square footage and keep it, that square footage to a smaller livable standard than to look at, let's do it as a number two, I mean, sorry, as two units, three units or four units. It can, it can be any number of units that we will end up doing because we have all the multiplexes that we have to work on. Why not think of in terms of square footage?
So how would you propose to change it with the square footage?
So I'm basically saying, let's think of the square footage as between twelve hundred to fourteen hundred square feet per unit.
Well, I want to point out that we can't be more restrictive than what's currently allowed today. We currently allow point five. So what you could do is you could start at two and you could add point five, and then for three, you could make it point six-five.
Okay.
And that would bring the unit sizes down.
Okay. Okay. So which basically, I just blew the point one-five out of the water then. Did I just do that?
Yeah, well, the, yeah, the issue is, is that we can't, we can't be more restrictive than our current rules for single-family.
Got it.
Right?
Got it.
But, but we can be as restrictive.
Got it. Got it. So then that goes, that, that what David said goes perfectly fine. Instead of starting at point six-five, can we start at two and point five? And we will be, we will be in line with it rather than thinking of it this way. My worry is that at the end of this, everybody's gonna look at that and gonna say, yep, I'm gonna just build twos and, and go with it. And we'll suddenly have two units, a lot of two units, and then we'll be back at the same problem we had, we have right now. Anyway, that's something to think about. Can you go to slide number fifteen? Okay, this was a fun thing. I was just thinking as you were talking about it, right? That may not require more than one parking stall and may not require more than two parking stalls and you're, and as you were saying, that, you know, we could remove that and we could go for it. And I was thinking, that's fantastic. That works for Seattle, that works for Bellevue, that works for Redmond, because they are not bedroom communities like Seattle, like Sammish, right? In Sammish, that would not work. We are, we are practically, we are a bedroom community at this point in time. What happens on Fat Tuesday? If I invite five people home for dinner on Fat Tuesday and somebody on the other side of the road invites seven people at home because they have a three thousand five hundred square feet home, right, and have those things, we suddenly don't have parking stalls and we're all on the street and everybody's trying to find a spot. And, and in a residential area, you have too many cars moving around and that'll become a big problem.
So what is the difference? Why you bringing bedroom community into this? Why you bringing bedroom community?
Yeah, that's because in bedroom communities, we typically don't have parking lots. If you look at Redmond, as you go towards, as you go off the, I, sorry, this is going to show my, my liking, as you go past Hoffman's Bakery, okay? You have a lot, you have a parking lot over there. It's a general parking lot, three hours of parking free, right? That doesn't happen over here. We don't make those kinds of things. And that's the difference as a bedroom community was-
So we don't have that much commercial?
We don't have that much commercial to justify that kind of thing, right? And so what will end up happening is that we will, we will create the same problem that we are trying to solve, right? We would end up having too many cars moving around, too many cars on streets, and then the families that we want to have and want to build and all of those things, they're gonna come and they're gonna say that our kids cannot run on the road because there, there is so much of parking or traffic that's moving around, people trying to find parking. And so I would really, I had a real problem thinking about this fifteen.
So, so there's a couple ways to go about this, right? One is we have, there is a, I wanna call it a floor on what we, what we absolutely are required that we can't do, right? The state legislature has told us, you may not require more than one parking stall per unit on six thousand square feet, may not require more than two, et cetera. One way to look at this is, we might allow for a reduction in parking for those properties that are within a quarter mile of an existing or planned transit route. We don't have many of those. So if you're building a project that's walkable, well, maybe there's a reason why you could reduce the parking. But if you're in neighborhoods, that, that we could require some additional parking spaces, but not more than what the state is telling us we're allowed to require.
Yeah, that's fantastic, because I thought that other places like Redmond and Seattle and Bellevue and all of those things, they inherently solve that problem with that walking, parking options, transit options. We don't have that option. We don't set that up and we've not thought about it also. So my, my thing was that when I saw this, I was like, and again, what happens on Fat Tuesday, right? And that's a problem. So again, something to think about. Those are my two questions.
Don't worry, they'll all park in your alley.
Thank you.
You might, you know, interview people who, maybe we should, who live in the Ichijo Development, whatever the current name of it is, down the road here on two-twenty-eighth. You know, that's a really dense, you know, that's largely a middle housing type development and there's no real surface parking outside of their garages. And I'm curious, you know, how that works for them in those cases.
That's totally fair. That's totally fair, but we have only one Ichijo, right? If you get like four or five, you suddenly have too many problems.
And, and it's on a transit line and more transit lines are planned for that, that two-twenty-eighth corridor. So it's, it's in that location where you might offer a reduction.
I also think that people in Sammish rarely park in their garage anyway, so I'm not sure how an alley would work because-
Where do you keep all your stuff?
Yeah. Unless we start requiring basements, I don't see where people are gonna park their car. Okay, so I have one question, which might be a dumb question, and then a couple comments. So I'll do my comments first. Most of this is, Tyler, just for future thinking about how we talk about this, present it, you know, craft things. One is, when we did our building code modifications in the past, there were a lot of comments and discussion about adjacency, so trying not, trying to figure out ways to limit people coming in and building giant three-story houses right next to a Rambler. We have a few examples of that in the community. They're not very nice and people get shaded out. And so I'd want to like not allow the middle housing to wipe that out and try to still be cognizant of adjacencies with existing homes. That's one comment. Oh, the other one was alleys. So the, the other one is, I think that it's pretty difficult. I'm starting to catch on with the, the floor area ratio, the building coverage and the building footprint stuff and how it creates better opportunity for middle housing, but it, it's kind of hard to follow. I mean, Ajay was asking one of the questions, but it's just not easy to follow the, okay, if we do this, the result will be this. How you get from point A to point B for those of us who are laymen, it's not easy to follow. So I think it'd be good to, as we talk about this more, try to clarify that a little bit. Okay. Then my question is, and maybe this is not a smart question, I'm not sure, but I don't exactly follow what an overlay is. And I say that because I'm sitting here thinking, okay, if I've got two acres in Sammish or I can aggregate two acres and it's in an R4 zone, the old thinking in my mind goes, okay, I can build eight houses there and I can build them all, net density however I want to. They can be close together, far apart, but I can build eight. That's what that means, basically, assuming it's all buildable. But now if you do say, okay, instead I'm gonna do middle housing, does that mean that I can have fourteen six-thousand-square-foot lots and build fourteen five-thousand-square-foot homes at twenty-five-hundred square feet each on those six? I don't, I don't quite understand how the, the things that we, or at least I am used to in terms of the net density and the R zones, do they get thrown out and the middle housing applies? And how many does that result in? And how does that not result in just more houses that are not quite as big? I'm not tracking that exactly.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite David also to opine on this because it is highly-
He's close to me, so he can kick me.
It's, it's highly, go ahead, David, I'll let you start.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that, so, so what happens basically is, is the underlying zoning, the zoning that we have today is what allows for the division to happen. You don't get it, we're not, the overlay itself doesn't allow the division. It's the underlying zoning. So if you're in an R4, let's say you've got two acres, you'd be able to, and let's say the math is square, everything works, you get eight units, right? So you could divide your property into eight units and so long as each of those lots was six thousand square feet within that division, well, then you'd be able to build three units on each of the lots that's created in the division. Because of the overlay, right? You could either use the base, single-family residential zoning and build, build eight homes if you wanted to, or, and you could mix and match if you wanted to, so long as the lot was six thousand square feet in size, according to what we're talking about here, you could build three units of middle housing type on any one of the lots in that division. And so you might, say you want to build half of them in single-family homes, so you get four single-family homes. And then say you want to build half in middle housing type, so you get twelve units of single, of middle housing type. There's, there's other partner bills that go along with this. There's a whole nother one that you're gonna be hearing about soon about impact fees. So we're also being required to retool our impact fees to reflect unit sizes. So, so if you're building a neighborhood like that, you'd have to pay the impact fees for the single-family homes, then you'd have to pay the impact fees for the two-bedroom units, the one-bedroom unit, the studio unit, and that would be how that would all be calculated up. So what, what happens here is you have the base that exists today. We're not talking about changing that. But what you could layer on top of that, the overlay, which would enable you to, so long as your lot was six thousand square feet or bigger, build three units on, on that, on that lot. And with that, there are parking limitations and things that go along with that, but, and we're talking about maybe allowing more Ford area ratio if you add more units, and we're talking about a different way of managing the footprint size for those types.
So you can have more lots, you can just have more buildings?
Yeah, the tricky thing that comes along with this also though is a requirement in the bill that, that requires you to be able to condominiumize and sell the units. So the, the challenge from the end, and this is where I think the legislature does not understand how this stuff works, because what you could end up in that, in that scenario is, so say you're R4, say you got two acres, say you create eight lots, say each of the lots is bigger than six thousand square feet and say on each of the eight lots, you want to build three units, and now you want to condominiumize it, well, now you're creating eight condominiums. And that is an absolute nightmare to manage. So, so what we're looking at is there's another tool that we might bring back to you that's called a unit lot division, that just accepts that that, that sale is gonna happen and those units are gonna be sold, and it would allow somebody to come in and do the same thing that you would get, but create real property parcels. So you could get a triplex with, so you in essence would be doing a twenty-four lot division that results in the same dimensions and all those things, but it then doesn't require us to go through the, the mental gymnastics, as one of my staff would say, of, of actually creating twenty-four individual condominiums. Or I guess, yeah, yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Hopefully, hopefully that made some sense.
Yeah. No, I think I understand better now. All right. Anything else? We're either gonna have, we're gonna have to extend. Somebody extend fifteen minutes so we can do a public comment.
Move to extend fifteen minutes.
Second.
Moving to second, it extends to nine fifteen.
Chairman, you brought up something that I need to, Dave, to kind of-
Excuse me, can I finish, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, we're extended at nine fifteen. Go ahead.
You brought up, Mr. Chairman, a question about that shading building. Do we have guidelines?
So the way our current rules are set up for single-family, our setbacks that we added with development reg space two, that was a big topic, right? We, we wanted to make sure that there was adequate separation between homes to allow, you know, solar access and all those types of things. One thing you could add as a, you know, one of the controls, I think about the controls that we're adding. One control you could add if you wanted to is a daylight plane requirement. And a daylight plane requirement, it's a little bit of an abstract concept. What it does is it requires that the building orientation and the roof pitch fit inside of a prism that is laid over the property. And the principle or concept there is that the bulk and scale of the building, the orientation of the building, the roof lines of the building are oriented in a way that when the sun is up at a certain times of the year, doesn't overly, overly restrict solar access to properties to the north or I guess a little bit to the west or east, depending on the time of day. So Bellevue has a really good example of that. I, I worked on that back when I was there, how many years ago? And it's, it's, the challenge there is if the more of these things you add to the code, the more staff you need to administer it, because it's, it's complicated and people don't get it right away and you gotta, you're, you're always arguing with architects, you know, that's always fun. So, you know, that's the type of thing you could add, but other than that, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna see and middle housing does result in a bulkier building that has more bulk and scale and does cause more impact to solar access and, and, you know, just in terms of its presence, it's, it's a bit of a different feel.
Well, the only reason that I brought up, a gentleman sitting in the audience, and he brought it and he reminded us that one of his concern, R1 zone that he is in, he's gonna be facing with the, in the town center, he's gonna be facing eighteen-story building next to him. And the thing that came to my mind was-
Yeah, well, I want to be clear, we're not gonna get eighteen-story buildings. That's not allowed in the city.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure ChatGPT could take over your arguing with architects if you really gave it the right prompt. Okay, does anybody else have any last comments? And we're gonna get to revisit this topic again. So I would encourage though, I'm gonna sit down and write out a few of my comments and email them in. I think there's a lot of stuff here, so it's probably worth doing that to organize your thoughts.
I, I do have one closing comment, and that is, when thinking about code, one of the things I've learned over the years working with lots of different codes is that you want to make sure that you have the right, first, you have the right tools in the code, then you want to think about what the setting is on that tool, the lever, where it's set, the dial, where it's set. And, and I'm, I want to own and be honest that I'm pretty sure we're gonna come back and update this in 2025. And and I'm, I want to own and be honest that I'm pretty sure we're gonna come back and update this in two thousand and twenty-five. So trying to get it right now and as best as we can is important. But knowing that we have the ability and a great commission and a great council, really good system here, to bring it back and pretty quickly update it when we start to see things crop up that might not be desirable or unintended outcomes. And we're here to do that. So I do anticipate that, you know, we were handed this by the legislature in short order. We were told to get it done. So we're we're kind of trying to do what we can here. But I I I'm a firm believer in, once the tools are in there, we could always quickly come back and move the settings on those tools.
Tyler, thank you. This is a tough one, so I really appreciate the effort you put in.
Oh, you bet. Thank you all. Appreciate the feedback. Looking forward to bringing it back to you all soon. Next up, you can expect an updated draft of the comp plan as early as tomorrow. And then we'll see you again middle June with the the next round of code material. Thanks.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Okay, let's uh, move on to our public comment for this evening, agenda related. So public comments on critical area ordinance, or what we just talked about with the middle housing, in the room, who would like to make public comment? As a reminder, for everybody, just say your name and how long you've lived in Spanish, kind of where you're at.
Think this is on now. Again, my name is Sam Rodaba. I've been a resident in the city of Simamish about twenty years. Uh, I'm also a longtime real estate, land use and environmental law attorney. First of all, I I commend the commission. For those of you that are laypersons, to be able to follow all this, even with my expertise, is very challenging. Um, and so I appreciate you. There were some questions tonight about off-site mitigation. And I just want to give you an example of one that I just did here in the city. I have a client in her nineties who originally purchased a parcel within the city in the nineteen-sixties. At the time, it did not perk, and she was told that she could develop as soon as sewer came to the area. And she was told that would be within a couple of years. Well, sewer made it to that part of the Beaver Lake neighborhood just a couple of years ago. And that finally allowed her to develop, but the property was entirely encumbered by shorelines and wetlands. And so in order to be able to develop, we needed a shoreline variance. And that essentially required having very small footprint for a residence that would be commensurate with our reasonable use exception. And the reality is, the parcel for, since it's been owned since the sixties, was still in pristine condition. The shoreline, the wetland, there were no invasive species, anything like that. And so that meant that when we went through mitigation sequencing, we had to try to first avoid the impact. And it's like, well, we've got to get some reasonable use, some structure on here, minimize it. We did that by making the smallest, you know, structure footprint that we could. But then there was no place within the site to do any mitigation, because it was all in its natural condition. There were no invasives that we could remove or sort of improve on site. And so for that reason, the off-site mitigation became very important. Now, had there been a mitigation bank within the city of Simamish, we would have preferred that. Because obviously, the neighborhood said, well, wait a minute, why are we improving things in Redmond at the Keller mitigation bank? And the reality is, because that's the only place that we could do it. And the city was constitutionally obligated to give us some minimal reasonable use of the property. And so you have this tension there. So I appreciate that the code will hopefully be updated to make that an option. You still have to go through that mitigation sequencing, but I think there's part of a educational component there. Because, you know, the public doesn't like that, but the boots on the ground essentially, you know, need that, require it in order for things to move forward. Um, I had one question, and I know you don't necessarily take questions in public comment. And that is, for the update to the critical areas ordinance, when you're within shoreline jurisdiction, shoreline master programs must be approved by the Department of Ecology. And so if you are going to amend your critical areas ordinance and have it apply within shoreline jurisdiction, you typically have to submit that to the Department of Ecology to be approved as an amendment to your shoreline master program. And so I, my question would be, is the city planning on amending the critical areas ordinance and submitting that to Ecology as part of the shoreline master program?
Yes, because our critical areas rules are incorporated by reference into directly into our shoreline master program. So any update, the Ecology holds a static copy of of our critical areas rules. It's a snapshot in time of when the SMP was approved. And we would be then sending it to Ecology in order to make sure that the new rules are reflected in our SMP that they have on file.
Yeah, and what that usually means is there's unfortunately a lag time and sort of a division in the city where during a certain period of time after you adopted your critical areas ordinance update, it's applicable everywhere by shoreline jurisdiction. And then that new version isn't applicable within shoreline jurisdiction until it's actually approved by the Department of Ecology. So sometimes that can be frustrating. Um, those were my only comments tonight. So again, I appreciate everyone's effort. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Who would like to go next? Mary? Doesn't matter.
Hello, Michael Mattis, eighteen-year resident of Simamish. Um, just some very brief comments tonight that I I hope will be helpful. The, there's a real world example of uh, um, some of the issues you were talking about in this middle housing discussion. Uh, the developer Tureen, they're currently building um, two million dollar homes in the Lancaster area, just off southeast Eighth. The typical Simamish configuration, giant home on uh, on a tiny lot, where everyone looked at them. Tureen is also the developer, from what I understand, at Brownstone's West duplexes. Those homes won't be two million dollars. Duplexes are a middle housing type. You know, the, they'll probably be half that cost. In Simamish, that's middle housing. I mean, if if what's being built on most lots today are close to two million dollar homes, through your various planning parameters, if it results in more duplexes and townhomes and triplexes and so forth getting built, you'll have your middle housing types. I think taking, you know, trying to at the same time take on the issue of guaranteeing that those middle housing types also become affordable in any kind of commonly understood sense of the term, might be an impossible task in Simamish. And and maybe it just makes sense to focus on, uh, as as most of this discussion did, on um, you know, arriving at parameters for middle housing types, they're they're still going to be expensive, but if they're half the cost or less of what's being built elsewhere, well, that's a lot more affordable than what's being built now. And uh, and, you know, that would be a good thing for some people, but not everybody. So that's all, just a quick observation about those two projects. I thought that might be helpful.
Thanks, Michael. Mary?
Mary Victor, Simamish for twenty-four years. Um, covered a lot of things, really good comments and discussion. I had some wetland things on page seventy. All your categories of wetlands have the same setback of three hundred or a hundred and fifty feet. It just seems like, hmm, maybe they should be different for the different categories. I'd also like to know, it seems like wetlands have no minimum size. So if you have a plant that's a wetland, because there's a puddle in your yard, it's a wetland, you can't pull it. I think that needs to be looked at. There is a little thing, I couldn't find it today, in the King County Service Water Design Manual, that says, if you have a ditch that's meant to have stormwater in it, and there's wetland plants growing, you don't have to call it a wetland. So maybe we should think about that. I've also been around long enough when Don Jaren was running things in city council as mayor. There were some isolated wetlands comments about the Army Corps gets to control those down by the waterways and the lakes, but that the city can include, can deal with those when they're not in those areas in the city. And um, sometimes those isolated wetlands are actually caused by the city not doing stormwater, and then it builds a wetland. So those were my wetland comments. Um, I want to talk a little bit about housing. There are mobile homes in the city. There are some along the lake. There's some a lot in Inglewood, because those lots are twenty-five by a hundred feet. You have to have thirty-five feet for a minimum lot size, but it doesn't matter. They exist, so they have to build. The cool thing about a mobile home is they don't charge you for the structure. You just get taxed only on the land. There are really good modular homes, too, um, in Montana and development where I own a lot. And there's two in there right together. My mom actually had to tell me they were modular homes. They didn't know they were. And driving about a week ago, NPR had a really nice little thing online that I could listen to about modular homes. They build them, and I think you can build a house in six hours with all the new things they're doing. So um, those are some ways to do that. Um, on the housing thing, I also was at the meeting where they chose the types with council. I don't know why they don't allow courtyard types. Courtyard types are really nice houses. I don't think there's any reason to not have those. I'm also just gonna ask some wild questions. How many of you ever play in your front yard? Most people don't. It's just there to look good. What if we push those houses forward and we had side yards that were usable? Because the the side yards, the kids can play together, they're not running in the street. Or you have duplexes with uh, backyards that are, even if they're fenced, there's a gate between them. So I think there's other things they can do that way. Um, when you were talking about the number of units on what, how many square feetage that you get, how about if somebody has the solar access or the land or the area? And if they're gonna do an affordable unit, you give them an extra ten or fifteen feet so they can build another story. Maybe that doesn't work, because I don't know if it four-story, if you need an elevator or not. But those are just some things I thought about with the housing. I did want to speak to John Backman's questions about trees. If you do have an unhealthy tree, you can remove it. You don't have to replace. I had to do that. It was really confusing, went through the whole thing. But I ended up kind of thinning and made the other trees better, so it was good. And there are other people that do that. What's missing in the tree code is there's no tree bank. So if anybody wants to do anything, you could put them in a tree bank, but no one's ever designated one, because we don't have any place in the city. We could plant trees. And if you go to the parks meeting, they say, we have enough trees in our parks, so don't use parks. So it's, I I think we, now that we're a tree city and we have a sustainability board that's a tree board, maybe we could find a place that our trees could get planted. And then for the mitigations, you should try to avoid in critical areas, which means don't develop, use your TDRs, put them in centers, get more density there. You should try to minimize, so that means you make, you mean to make your footprint smaller. And if you're getting a reasonable use exception, I think it's limited now to twenty-five hundred square feet due to the development regs phase two. We really shouldn't be doing things like mowing and try to put this stuff in Redmond, because as David Pyle knows, there was an error. Critical areas were not supposed to be able to be cleared, and that was an error. There was a fifty cubic foot limitation that was never implemented in code. And then as we went through the development regs, I believe, I heard David Pyle say, we just don't even have limits on clearing and grading for lots. So we don't want to go back to where we're, we're not, we're, we're just letting people do it. Because having a mitigation plan or planting plants and taking care of them for a few years is too hard. We've been through that. There are definitely cumulative effects. So thank you, Mike Brusco, for ch- for for channeling Mary Victor on the cumulative effects. But it's it's really the cumulative effects of when you're putting too many houses or doing too many things, or even little things, the effects do add up. And they definitely cause issues. And I have seen people that have mitigated play, mitigation plans, it's recorded on their lot, they're not doing it, all the plants are dying. And even though ten thousand dollars was put in to put it there, it's not happening. So there's also some process in code and some of the stuff that Avril Beatty does that's important. And then for my final portions here, I wanted to talk a little bit about the critical areas of landslide and steep slope. I wrote a really long email and also copied parks, because I went back to the Growth Management Act, looked up the Critical Areas Handbook online, which is hundreds of pages, searched for the word steep and anything that had steep slopes. So I learned more about steep slopes, but I think we really need to cover those, because A, they're not identified, B, they haven't been mapped. When they were mapped, they didn't have a legend. Now they're online, they're a little bit different than the ones from two thousand and three. So I think they're really only the steeper ones, and I'm trying to get regu- regulations on that. But like, here in Tamarack, I've marked, I've kept track of the landslides that have occurred. If the city's having a geotech or somebody come in, or a civil engineer, uh, one of those licensed professionals, and the city doesn't know that these things have happened, they can't talk about it. Like Lisa Ware told me in the beginning, she's a stormwater technician, man with the city a long time. She said, the people need to know the parcel, the city needs to know the area. And the way that you learn about areas is from the people that live there. So like, there were some landslides in Evan Creek Preserve that took out some trails. I don't even know those occurred, or how big they were, what the rainstorm was. I think the city needs to do record keeping, so Mary Victor doesn't have to. So also Holly on the road, also in nineteen eighty-two, had a really big slide. The biggest thing I can talk about that's really important is, I've talked about this should be a landslide hazard drainage area, and it wasn't, and there's seventy-seven homes. Because Tamarack is here, and it didn't have this little bit of yellow that was finally added by two thousand and seventeen, it really changed what was done for drainage reviews in addition to doing old codes. So the King County code always had critical drainage areas. They've made this map. And we need to use those kind of as the buffers and boundaries, not just fifteen or fifty feet, because it's just not enough and it doesn't work. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else?
Kent Trine, and I've been in the city, I think, twelve years, maybe I'm going on thirteen now. And I'm also a city council member. Uh, but I, so I wanted to kind of just take a a large picture overview of the critical areas. And mainly the the, to me, it seems the easiest thing for the city to do would be to just put the buffers on the riparian on the on the streams that that exists here already. Because what it does, then it also meets one of the requirements that King County is putting on us when we do our comprehensive plan update, is that's the infr- uh, interaction with the wildlife. So that interface, it takes place, it takes place along waterways, or from what I like to say is lake to lake to lake. And and that's what we are seeing already. Just this morning, put the emergency flashers on, and the deer walks across East Lake Simamish Parkway. The gentleman who was riding that, driving the other direction, did the exact same thing. And we're just like, yeah, what a wonderful morning and what a wonderful experience to have this morning at six-thirty on our roadway, because they're there. So it seems to me that in critical areas, the easiest one is where our streams are right now. So gee, um, I'm working with staff to actually put that together. And hopefully, it it needs to be more extensive. It's just uh, kind of a beginning that we're doing. But uh, it it's it's doable, and I I like what Mary always says, hey, map it. And it's it's, if we map that and use that as part of, in our comp plan, even just that section, it makes it really clear for anybody who comes in and says, hey, I want to develop, or I want to do this on my property. It's like, no, here's, here's the requirements, here, here's the regulations for these particular areas. Most of them are in ravines or steep slope landslide hazardous areas anyway, because we're a plateau and everything's running off of the plateau down to either the water to a wetland, or out to the rural area, or down into our well, it's running out to Issaquah. Uh, the second one was on the housing issue. Am I doing all right on time? Okay, good. Uh, the housing issue is, uh, from a high level, again, it's really about land use. So I was elected, uh, you guys were appointed to deal with the issue of the, what do we do with the land and how is it used? And so I think the biggest thing that I've pushed for for now four years is to separate our zoning with a future land uh, use map. And that's what you guys, I I think that's where some focus needs to be placed so that when you're making decisions as to where you're going to put the h- uh, middle housing within the city, you have a good idea of, oh, here's where it could go. Maybe we don't want it at Rock Meadows. That would be nice. So then design Rock Meadows and say, this is how that land's going to be used. Here's what the shoreline looks like. Here's what our existing centers look like. And so what do we do at those locations? What are we going to do with the town? So it's kind of like, look at the land use map, the, not only the zoning, but really, what's the futures map gonna look like? So that when that then comes to the council, it's pretty much already flushed out. And we can just say, yeah, this, this is, this meets, that's the third thing. I think, and that's what Tyler's slide said for your next steps, that you're gonna look at some of this stuff. But it's kind of like, we we have to present, the the city of Simamish has to present and staff, this is what they're working for. They have to present a comprehensive plan that can be approved by King County. So so the focus of this commission and also the focus of the council has to be on, and staff, that's what they're doing. It has to be a plan that's going to be approved by King County. And if King County says the number's two thousand one hundred dwelling units, and that these ones have to be affordable, we have to have a plan that meets those requirements. these ones have to be affordable, we have to have a plan that meets those requirements. And so that's what we're gonna deliver to King County, period. And if that doesn't, I mean, that's what's gonna happen. So how, you have the opportunity to help us form that and make it kind of weave in together and work. And so I really appreciate, you guys, it's a tough job. It's not simple in the choices and decisions that you have to make, and then you're gonna bring it to us and we're gonna take some of them out anyway, so, sorry about that. Some of them I won't be able to stop, right? Okay, enough. Thank you very much for all the work you guys do, I really appreciate it. And staff, you guys are wonderful, and Tyler, it was a really great presentation, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Kent. Who do we have on the meeting?
We have one hand raised, Mr. Stickney, I am promoting you now.
Hello, planning commissioners and staff, Paul Stickley, Spanish have been involved since nineteen ninety and lived here full-time since two thousand and thirteen. Good thing it is, it's baseball season, but two issues. I'm not gon- I'm not sure I'm gonna, uh, I'm not sure I'm on base or off base, and I'm not sure I'm getting the order of these bases right, but I'm gonna give it a shot. In reading the packet, in looking what PSRC did with their analysis of House Bill eleven ten before it, it was finished, et cetera, I didn't hear tonight the, you know, the talk about, that I was actually hoping to hear some more about, is, I think that roughly eighty percent of our community has homeowner associations that won't allow missing middle at this time. And unless that changes from the law, I understand that you have to come up with a overlay that basically applies. But I'm trying to get a sense of, at least for a few years before the state changes it, and maybe they won't, is what's the rough amount that may be feasible? That's my, that's my first step. HOAs is an issue. And I'm struggling with something, and maybe it's just me, but if you have an overlay that allows more structures, I'm trying to figure out, is the total impervious surface covered on a site greater or equal to existing zoning? So if existing zoning equals a impervious surface of X under circumstances on one lot, does missing middle housing allow more? I'm unclear on that. Or is it a combination of a few units that equals the same? And if it's more, how does tree retention work? How does stormwater, uh, management work? So there seem to me, I'm not quite clear on how the effects of the regulations that the community has put into place that are not affected by House Bill eleven ten would impact the final outcome that happens on the sites. And I appreciated the presentations, understand how, how the different zones have, have different things. And so, of, you know, I, I'll just kind of leave it at, at that spot. What I appreciate knowing is, I think we got a great presentation of what the state wants and what some ideas are to make it and have the overlay go in place. What I'm interested in is, what's the practical application constraint for at least a few years? And at that, I will stop tonight. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else?
No more hands raised.
All right. Evan or David, anything for staff?
Just a friendly reminder for, um, those who may be attending Plateau, the fourth on the Plateau, that Rich's team will be there, um, doing video interviews for the time capsule video for the twenty-fifth Jubilee. So if you plan on going, please be sure to find Rich and participate in the video, especially our planning commissioners. It'd be great to have your voices there. Yes. Uh, we will also be sending out a link to the updated, uh, second draft of the comprehensive plan to the planning commissioners and posting it online on, uh, Monday, the tenth, hopefully by end of day. We'll, um, get that up and forward it to you guys. It'll be a convio link like last time. We'll send some associated instructions, and the next time we'll be meeting that, on that, is June twentieth.
Great, thanks. I think it's time for somebody to move to adjourn. Second, it's been moving to second that we adjourn for the evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's wonderful weather out there, please go enjoy it. Thank you.